How about you, Beth?
I make a motion to approve the conditional approval for investigations and this primary proceeding is ED five eleven.
Second, please, one more time. Thank you very much. She's frank today. Fisher is not listed today. So we didn't have any signups when I checked. Do we have anybody else?
No.
Okay. So that is good. We're gonna go to Julie Burrow.
Good morning. I'm Claudia Barker, Julie Shay, National School Coordinator. The first thing we have on the agenda here is a conditional approval response for the ED five eleven rules, which you saw the final proposal for in March. So this went to Jelcar at the May meeting and was approved. And I've provided judgment document on Jelcar comments as well as all of which he needs me to address. The comments from Jelcar, Jelcar and one thousand questions already noted.
You may have even.
And if people will approve this, some of them must tell them that the actual rules later on.
You got a motion. We're scrolling through looking for the right motion.
I make a motion to approve the conditional approval for investigations and this primary proceeding is ED five eleven.
Second, please, one more time. All right. Thanks for listening.
See you.
See you. All right. I say you spotlight. Who do we have?
Morning.
Morning. Nashville.
Nashville. Nashville's on the second floor. Good morning. My name is Danielle Archer and I'm the Program Director for the Twenty First Century Extended Day Program with the Nashville School District. And I also serve as the Program Coordinator for our Power Scholars Academy during the summer. Within our district, we specialize in summer learning programs that are designed to support the needs of our multilingual students, our multilingual learners, students with disabilities and incoming kindergarteners or parents for the strong start of their upcoming school year. We also commend ourselves to ensuring that our educators are equally supportive. From new teacher orientation to curriculum mapping and data analysis to other professional development opportunities, we provide our, sorry, we pride ourselves in empowering our educators by providing them the tools that they need to continue to make positive impact for our students' education. I'm excited to speak with you this morning about our Power Scholars Academy program, one of the many extended summer learning programs offered at the Nashville School District taking place this summer. Power Scholars Academy is a five-week full-day summer learning program offered at three school sites through a partnership of the Nashville School District and the YFC of Great Lakes, Nashville. For the last six years, the Nashville School District has offered Power Scholars Academy for students between rising first and rising ninth grade as an intervention resource for low-income students who are behind grade level and reading a map and it's designed to combat summer learning loss. Low-income students who are not engaged in summer learning programs lose an average of two and a half to three months of learning each summer and it accumulates over their entire school year. Compounding other variables like financial limitations as well as limited access to academic services and resources during the summer, our low-income students face an uphill battle in accessing quality learning program and experiences that can help close their learning gap. In an effort to meet educational needs for our students and provide necessary support to promote their academic success, Power Scholars were developed to provide Nashville school districts students with extended learning experiences that not only prevent summer learning loss but bring our students closer to grade level proficiencies while preparing them for the upcoming school year. Funded by federal education grants such as the Title I Grant and our Title IV being the Amalawi Twenty First Century Grant and with the incredible support and guidance of the New Hampshire Department of Education, it enables our Nashville School District to provide learning opportunities for our students, allowing them to acquire knowledge and skills that meet state and grade level proficiency standards at no cost to our students' own families. We are also excited to announce that we have been awarded the Children Literacy Foundation Summer Meeting Grants, which will allow us to bring authors, literacy materials, and engaging reading presentations for our program this summer and all through our centers. Similar to our Twenty First, our School District Twenty First Century Extended Day Program that's offered during the school year, the population of students that we target for registration and enrollment for Power Scholars are students who might struggle with attendance, student engagement, conduct, and academic achievement during the school year, which ultimately impacts their academic success. To ensure that students who are in need of these performance, who are in need of support in these performance areas are properly identified from our extended learning programs, there's a lot of collaboration throughout the district with direct referrals from school administrators, teachers, counselors, special education teams, ELL program coordinators, specialists, and more. At the first, at the end of the first trimester, we start brainstorming students who might benefit from extended learning programs like Twenty First Century during the school year, Power Scholars during the summer, or other extended learning programs by reviewing student performance data from benchmarking academic assessments while also collaborating with student services teams to ensure that students are supported during the school year and to the summer. As student referrals are received, I work with other Nashville School District coordinators as well as administrators to extensively collaborate and assess student referrals and each student's individual needs to ensure that students are matched with the appropriate summer program that best meets their unique education needs. Power Scholars is designed to be an all-inclusive program that provides elementary and middle school students with fun, engaging educational programming with added extracurricular enrichment activities. We recruit and hire New Hampshire certified educators and instructional coaches to offer rigorous learning with evidence-based curriculum developed by Scholastic Scholar Zone that focuses on expanding literacy and learning and comprehension. Staffing Power Scholars and district teachers enables us to ensure that curriculum and learning aligns with our school year, our school year's approaches and that our students are receiving the same learning competencies all year. In addition to our students receiving the academic support from Power Scholars, we also continue to access extra extracurricular, I'm sorry, wait, continue to access the district's educational tools like Lexia, which focuses on literacy instruction and assessment as well as the science of reading, which provides our students with grounded literacy instruction, ensuring that all of our students are able to build foundational literacy skills, vocabulary, background knowledge, and comprehension as well as fluency. In addition to Zern, which also helps our students to explore and comprehend mathematical concepts during the summer class. To measure the impact of our Power Scholars Academy, all of our students who participate during the summer complete a star assessment at the beginning and the end of the funding program. Our pre and post-assessment details star benchmarks, head scores, world rates, giving us a full view of our students' progress, including growth and achievement measures. At the end of each summer term, these assessments are shared with our students' schools, teachers, school teams, and families at the start of the new school year to ensure that the entire team has data that accurately depicts each student's progress and growth while also identifying strategies and skills that are needed to help the student reach grade level proficiency and mastery. Over the last six years, we have had over sixteen hundred students participating in our Power Scholars Academy. And our star assessments show that on average, at the end of each summer term, our students gain an average of three and a half months of reading literacy and nearly four months of numeracy. This summer, we're on track to serve an additional three hundred more students. In addition to an incredible learning experience with weekly themes that ensure our students are prepared for their upcoming school year, Power Scholars provide our students with so much more, again at no cost to our students. We provide transportation to and from the program, breakfast and lunch, program supplies and materials, and educational field trips each week. Power Scholars students also participate in daily enrichment activities that expand on the literacy and numeracy lessons from earlier in the day. An opportunity to expand, to develop and expand competencies and interpersonal skills like communication, critical thinking, self-awareness, decision-making, problem-solving, and more are infused in each of our enrichment activities, helping our students to grow and pursue their best selves. Additionally, we are fortunate, so fortunate, to partner with a number of community organizations such as the Nashville Community Music School, the YFC of Great Lakes, Nashville, the City of Nashville's Photo Voice Program, Go Nashville, Girl Scouts, National Parks Alliance, and many more who come to our group Power Scholars and offer enrichment activities for our students at no additional cost. Now, a lot of these programs are, if they participated in the community, they would be some type of financial responsibility. Our students can participate, our students do participate in prevention programming, photography, dance, music, youth development program, gardening, swim, arts and crafts, and social emotional learning through the Choose One curriculum. Essentially, Power Scholars is a perfect mix between an instrumental summer learning program and a fundamental camp. This unique approach to our extended learning program allows us to re-engage students who may have struggled with school day learning, attendance, or engagement by providing them a continued attentive and fundamental learning experience expanding from the school year, re-engaging their passion for learning and school by using familiar school environments in a fun, creative, and impactful way. In addition to providing our students with academic enrichment achievement, we also host family engagement events, inviting all families to participate in the celebration of London on the Five Hundred Day of Power Scholars. Our students' learning projects and performance arts for any of the enrichment activities that they participated in are displayed for their families. We provide our families with community resource information, back-to-school information, literacy materials that they can bring home and continue to support their children. By offering family engagement events, we are also promoting our schools' communities as welcoming and supportive places where families can feel comfortable reaching out and working with the district to support their child's overall success. Promoting opportunities for family engagement at Power Scholars and in our schools contributes to positive student outcomes including improved student attendance, decrease in disciplinary issues, improvement in parent-to-teacher and teacher-to-student relations, and improved student overall achievement. The mission of the Nashville School District is to provide an educational program that expects excellence and accommodates the individual needs, interests, and abilities, providing the highest quality educational program to the students and adults of our school districts. I would say that our summer learning programs achieve this mission. Last summer, we administered, we administered a stakeholder survey for our Power Scholars students, teachers, and families. Ninety-one percent of our students reported that they believe that they can get better at things by working hard. Ninety-two of our Power Scholars, ninety-two percent of our Power Scholars staff reported that their students improved in working to overcome challenges during the program. And ninety-four percent of our families reported that their child had become more confident during the program. I want to end by thanking you for allowing me to come and showcase what we're doing in Nashville and talking about one of our summer learning programs. In the Nashville School District, we are committed to changing the life trajectories of our students by offering collaborative, innovative, and impactful curriculum, instruction, and academic enrichment to ensure that all of the students in our school districts have the fundamental knowledge, resources, and support to reach their highest of those success.
Fantastic.
Hi, I, the board applaud you.
Thank you.
What a program. I have a couple of questions. The three sites are those middle schools, high schools, where are the three sites?
So we have two elementary sites at Amherst Elementary School and Fairbend Elementary School. And our middle school program provides in sixth, provides in ninth, is actually housed in our Nashville High School stuff as there are a number of other summer programs in that building. So it's easier for us to consolidate and provide support, nursing assistance, and more space. Then we also strategically pick the schools that are close to a body of water pool so that students can still enjoy the summer while they're there.
You were also to be applauded for starting this program in two thousand eighteen. How admission was that for, for learning loss? And, and your, what, what do your statistics show you for your success prior to two thousand twenty and then after?
Well, I would say from two thousand eighteen, our progress with impact on students and positive impact is continuing to increase. Even just from the basic statistics that students lose two and a half months of summer learning loss when they're not engaged and we are approaching nearly four months of net growth for reading and math that's immense support for our students is, it alleviates the burden of that financial burden for our families as well. And when you think about the, the impact of the pandemic, we're saying we're still talking about it. A lot of our upper grade level students and Power Scholars, they were directly impacted by the pandemic moving them from the school environments that they know that they know. A lot of students tried to adapt to that more learning setting and struggled immensely. So when they come back to school, although you have to hit the ground running and provide really support, they still struggle. They lost opportunities for social engagement with their teachers. So now they have additional, you know, mental health challenges like anxiety or social challenges that also negatively impacts their ability to learn. But then you also have the younger educational students too, although they weren't directly impacted by the pandemic in two thousand twenty and, you know, a few years after, they're still experiencing the effects of the pandemic and how that impacted our teachers as well as a lot of our students baseline where they're serving at the education. So providing a program like Power Scholars and all of our other educational programs not only allows us to provide safe space during the summer, but it provides that added support so that we are kind of healing our students from the negative impact of the pandemic. So as, you know, pandemic plans are going on now, that need is still there. It's not moving away for a very long time. And Power Scholars is one of the many ways that the Nashville School District is actively working for creative ways to supplement what's happening in the school, during the school year.
How is Power School, uh, Power School, how is it, how, Power Scholars, how is that funded?
So we receive funding from the Title I, the Title I Grant, the Twenty First Century Extended Day Grant provides funding. The YFC partnered with them. They acquired funding. And a lot of the other community partners, the Girl Scouts, the Nashville Community Music School, although there is a cost to them offering the program for free, they secure their own funding so that it removes the burden of the Nashville School District and provide.
Very much so. Correct. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Such a fantastic program. Since it's been in, in operation for six years now, can you talk about the data on how it has affected Tulsi or education, academic performance and such of the students before and after this program? And I believe there must be a significant impact.
There, there is a significant impact and although I, I don't prefer exact numbers and things that are for, when even looking at Twenty First Century under the New Hampshire Department of Education, we are provided with different measures, both the performance measures that we have to track each year and follow the students, we're monitoring their state assessment scores, whether they're using math, we're monitoring their attendance and conduct, this is why they're supposed to school, we're monitoring group meetings for our older students. And then we're also receiving direct surveys from our teachers who are talking to us about how the students are just overall engaged within this school day, in the program. So by tracking the data from our best emerges, by tracking the data that we receive from our sets of programs, our Zern and Lexia, we are provided a realistic review of our students on students who are overperforming or underperforming. And as we're tracking it weekly with our school district administrators and teachers, we're able to target students who might go under the radar because they're just, they're quiet, they're not outspoken. We're able to look at that hard data and identify those students and place referrals, not just for summer, but throughout the school year to ensure that they're getting the support that they need to address whatever the barriers are that are preventing them from attending school. So as an example, for our Twenty First Century Learning Program, that's an after-school program that we offer for students, especially in schools, we do, we have five Title I elementary schools that we run for them in Virchell Elementary and Tensett, Tensett Heights Elementary, who all need forty percent or more in through the youth lunch with their student population. And we have one student, we're at principal receptionist, and said, we are looking at their attendance pattern and we noticed that this student every Friday leaves school by lunch. And, you know, we finally saw, we realized the pattern, we reached out to mom to figure out what was going on. Mom had a job for the weekends and she didn't have care, she didn't have transportation. So the student was losing school, school day hours to accommodate the mother's need. So even by paying attention to that attendance part, the administrator was able to reach out to us, share this story. We were able to bring them into our, our after-school program. So now instead of them leaving every Friday at eleven AM since the beginning of the school year, they are able to stay at the school until almost six o'clock in the evening, participating in educational activities, engaging in, in activities that allow them to socialize with their peers and then receiving that, that fundamental support from the program, from the teachers, from the background collaborations to address their needs. So looking at all of the students in Power Scholars and our Extended Day Programs, a lot of that collaboration, a lot of the behind-the-scenes phone calls is looking at every single individual student and not just generalizing the support that's needed, but, but looking at their data to provide them targeted support so that we're leaning on them and they can better engage during the school year as well as during the summer.
So you have six years of experience in this. Is it possible to put together your learnings?
Yeah, absolutely.
And into a structure so we could even scale it to others, other towns, other school districts?
Absolutely.
See, because you have gone through the learning process, you know.
Absolutely.
And I'm sure there must have been a lot of hardships and, you know, mistakes and that you learned. How do we scale it with that information, with the learning?
Yep. And although we usually have like a basis of, you know, what we're looking to achieve every year, we're always adding new components that may be used in the students. But we have data from all of the years as far as the net growth for reading, for literacy, for math. But also this is the stakeholder service where the students and the teachers and the families are individually telling us everything that they loved about the program, if they didn't like the program, where there's one for improvement. And at the end of the summer, starting from November or December, we start planning and collaborating to start the next summer, I believe, you know, what we have done.
Exactly. A, a document which maybe will scale out.
Could that blueprint, and I, I love what you're doing too, and just to piggyback off of Raj and Say, can that blueprint in the beginning kind of go through some bullet points of the statistics?
Yes.
Seventeen hundred people have gone through, seventeen hundred? And then another maybe three hundred or so this year, which is, which is great. Is there a, is there a way to broaden this and get to more students in the year?
Can, can I just respond? So we have a Twenty First Century program, it's, I can't get a much title in center, but this is offered to many schools in the state. They have after-school programs on the state and that's what the money is for. So I think maybe we could talk to that, all this is my, this is my, you know, born in New Hampshire. Information instead of just Nashville information, show you kind of where.
So there might be more broad statistics next to it.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah, that's what I was.
Because the measurements that she's talking about is that we require everybody.
Yeah. I wanted to mention the process so you can actually, it's definitely a bit of a, a custom based, so.
Yep. And the Department of Education gives us like the guidelines of, you know, what's expected for the, you know, with the grant funds. One of the expectations for summer learning is that our Twenty First Century Learning Centers provide at least a four-week, four-hour day program in the summer time. And the difference, school districts have the freedom to expand on that or meet the, the baseline requirements. What I do love about the Program Director for Twenty First Century is there's a lot of collaboration. There's a lot of support, identification from the Department of Education where we're sharing ideas, we're sharing resources so that we not, although it's a competitive grant that funds us, we're working collaboratively across the state so that we are all informed on what's available to us. Because at the end of the day, it's, it's children that work for us. We're going to that people.
Thank you so much.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great summer.
All right. So we've got Colbruck Columbia area. Anybody here? You don't have to be here. I'm just loading here. So this is, Rick, why don't you go reading? So we don't need to initiate this. It looks like all the boxes were checked on this.
I, uh, motion to approve the Colbruck Columbia Autrich Regional and Roma area plan for two thousand twenty-six to thirty-six.
Anybody want a second? Our seconds? One more time. Uh, Manchester. Do a language approval. Anybody here for Manchester's? Oh, we're gonna have somebody here. All right. So why don't we hold on that? Bridgewater, head on. I know you guys are.
Well, good morning. My name is Dean Egger. I'm with the Thermo Potley Star Peters. And it's my privilege to introduce to you a few people here, here this morning who have been instrumental in the formation, probably the birth of the newest school district within the state, the Bridgewater Hebron Special Purpose School District. And it will be known probably as the first school in the school district as a recognition of the historic roots in that area. So with me today is Terry Murphy. He is a selectman for the town of Bridgewater. Also with me today is Mark Holson.
I'm sorry, more Patrick.
I apologize, Patrick. Patrick is going to be representing the selectman's role, I believe, for, once again, Hebron. We have Eric Piper, who is a nominee. Eric is a nominee to this new school board. We have Virginia Parker from Groton. She is a nominee to the new school board. We have Mark Holson, who is a nominee as well to the new school board. And then last but not least, Bill Ludi. Bill was instrumental in working with the legislature on House Bill two thirty-nine. Please be seated. I'll keep it very brief. We're here this morning requesting you to grant our certificate of formation. We don't take it for granted, even though it is mandated as the next step in the statute. I wanted to give you a quick update on where we're at and where we've been. This team and many others have been meeting regularly through a steering committee appointed by the boards of selectmen and board for the statute. We really appreciate the fact that we were put on the agenda promptly with the state board because many of the things that have been planned now need to be implemented. Okay. So as soon as this board is up and operating, as soon as we have the certificate of formation, they will move past the early discussions with both Newfound and Clement to offer choice in terms of tuition contracts. They will work on beginning the negotiations to assume collective bargaining responsibilities for Newfound as the staff in the school. For those of you who may not be aware of the history, the elementary school is actually owned by a special village district. It's leased to currently the Newfound School District. That lease will expire June, well, it expires July one. It will probably be renewed. It will expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. That will provide a term key facility at a minimum for the gate through, I believe it's fifth. That will provide a term key facility at a minimum for the K through, I believe it's fifth or sixth, five, eight or five. And then we should be in a good place in terms of covering choice of tuition. Newfound has already agreed to bail out students if things didn't go well. We think they will go well. We brought on, and have begun discussions to bring on a formal, it's bringing on experienced superintendent consultancy, business administration consultancy support, this volunteer and eager team. And we certainly will be glad to try updates as requested by the commissioner of the board in that process. So I know also in the statute, there is a requirement that we consult with the state board about our special election, leave it to the legislature to do creative things like that. So I just want to share with you our proposal with regard to this special election, special meeting of the voters to elect a formal school board post pro temp. We'd like to hold that in conjunction with our first annual school district meeting, and that would be the second Tuesday in March of twenty twenty-five. And why would I suggest that? Because that would be consistent with the statute that talks about coordinating school district elections with town elections. It would be at least burdensome on the towns, they are historically used to convening at that time. It certainly will be a special election, but the timing would be great to do that. So I don't know that it requires any formal action on the board, but we are required to consult and when we're ready to book the warrant forward, we'll make sure we submit it to the state board because the statute requires that you be aware of that and prove that warrant, although the statute candidly prescribes what that warrant will look like. So with that, any of the individuals here would be glad to answer their questions. Once again, we really appreciate the support of the state board, the support of the commissioner, and ultimately, we anticipate the Department of Education to initiate this pledge on new schools.
Any questions?
No, I do have a motion. Satisfying the provisions of House Bill three forty-nine, I need that the state board approve and grant Bridgewater Hebron, Groton request for certification withdrawal formation of the Pasquale school.
One favor. Congrats, Pasquale is a great name.
What does it mean?
Well, it's Native American, terrible.
Native Americans, there's a lot of white shoes on, but it's, it's, I'm with the white shoes, right? I understand, and originally the label was in Pasquale, so now it's.
Have a school mascot, yeah. Have a school mascot, yeah.
What, what is the, rough numbers on student enrollment?
One hundred and eighty in K through twelve of the three towns. Are any, any in Bridgewater or in Hebron or in Groton?
Are there plans for sharing the resources with other, other districts to minimize your expenses?
Certainly, I mean, we can, we can, you know, getting the, all the various statutory requirements put together. But it's been, they have, there's a hundred and fifty-seven students in the school. Most of the, fifty percent of the student body is from other towns, but mostly in, in Alexandria, a few from Bristol, so it's always been shared with the other towns, and we continue to make that up.
Yeah, we'll see, we'll see, we'll see. Well, we'd like the children to finish their education in school they attend, we've done what the tailings is about, and I think we're on the way to getting that, to a natural progression, I think, of working together is the right answer.
I will only add if I made that, this was not a close vote, this was a ninety percent vote in every single town, next to ninety-eight percent, up to ninety-eight percent, I believe. So this was a situation where constituents were very eager to move forward.
And what was the reason for creating that?
Well, fundamentally, I think a lot of it has to do with the fact that these communities are invested in the future of education for their children, and that was the big thing. It wasn't, you know, it wasn't taxes, it wasn't just abortion, it was really this idea of moving forward as three white communities. And some of the ideas that have been voted, the idea of broadening the choice, for example, was one big theme, which is why they've been in discussion with Plymouth as well as Newfound. And I believe that's probably what's so well received.
The, the, although most likely that the parents have sometime want to go to K through eight, the other, it's a seven-town district, kind of, kind of. The problem with that is the distances you've all traveled and the different socioeconomic patterns that you've had throughout seven towns makes it very difficult to, you know, so very controlled for the educational process of the children. We believe that will have an impact on all the other remaining towns in a positive way to take more interest in our elementary schools.
Uniquely, you know, we own the school, so the unique thing, the hidden thing, so that kind of was the formation of it. And the district, this is, is two hundred and thirty square miles, if you can imagine. So moving children from one side of Groton all the way down to Newfound and, is, for the parents and the children is a real hardship, I think. People will really appreciate a closer and community type school.
So with one eighty, you said one eighty students?
Yeah, one eighty students.
That would be one of the smallest school districts, isn't it?
Yeah. Now, the smaller school district is more family oriented, even as it is now, there's a hundred and fifty-seven in that square, in the school, but only fifty percent of them, everybody from Groton. So it's mainly small, and there's a chance for the parents to have no choice as well, so. And it will be open to the other schools of the school districts, want to send their children there. About, maybe the parents want to petition to come to the school as long as it's shared, it's available. We were pretty sophisticated in the lease arrangement, but it turns around to find how many, you know, the area that they come from, but, and we left that, the separation, we own the building, but the school district ran it, and so the children have opportunities to come to the school. Especially in Malwesand, because that was maybe one of the two in class, including the clothes. So they've done, so I believe it'll be a longer-term relationship with the other, the other school district.
Do you expect it to grow? Yeah, sorry, do you expect it to grow from one eighty to something like?
No. I did, I did, that's going to fight, be fighting that problem with the state, a lot of your homes. That piggybacks off where I was going to go with this, and I'm a huge proponent for education as close to the parents as possible, so the rationale and the reasoning of what you're doing, fully supportive. The, the financial implications of a smaller student base with an infrastructure to support it, that, that can be challenging. I mean, that, that, that small student base and the teachers and the infrastructure and the superintendent and all that, everything that goes with it. I do know of certain schools that struggle at similar sizes to, to make ends meet. So for the tax burden, however that is, I'm sure you guys have thought this out, I'm sure you have wonderful plans in mind, but that is a challenge.
It is, but remember, the, the village district was created by a statute in nineteen ninety-nine, and Bridgewater and Hebron actually have a third tax on our bill. You know, you have the state education tax, the local education tax, where we have a village district tax where we have maintained that school. The citizens of Hebron and Bridgewater have kicked in about a hundred and seventy-five, two hundred thousand dollars a year where we do capital improvements, Terry, I put in the boiler, the Newfound School District can pay for that, our, our citizens pay for it because we have this unique village district statutory requirement. So we, you should come see the school, it's beautiful, yeah.
If I'm interpreting this, you've already been paying probably, I hate to say it, a little too much towards all of this, and now that money's going to go towards your.
It will now go, that's right.
Not to speak for you.
Since two thousand, it's been over six to eight million dollars.
I think it'll be more, but it won't be all the way off anymore. And the people that get back to it, and I think they understand the trade-off, the bargain.
Love to see what you're going to do with it, and like I said, I'm all for education close to the parents and families, so. Very good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all. So that's one of the weird, you know, I just like those things, they put in strange additional incentives, like the district consulting board and the programs. We don't have to, we don't, we don't consult the school districts on votes, so. You guys, thanks a lot.
Thank you, thank you.
This is part of what we've seen the last several years, I mean, so. Early twentieth century, I think for a lot of twenty-first century, we saw a lot of small counties consolidate into bigger school districts to save money, it was a big trend. And I think over the decline in enrollment over the last twenty years, we're seeing a lot of this, a lot. We keep getting these withdrawal plans, and we're seeing a lot of districts.
Which have the wonder, the attraction, how do you, is there a draw, is there a draw in, is there a moment in my dreams?
It could, but, you know, I think there's a lot of frustration, particularly in certain parts of the state where you're traveling, I mean, how many times do we hear that?
Forty-five minutes on plus.
Yeah, kids are traveling, and they want a smaller district, and, or they're paying taxes, and they disagree about the vision of the school, like they said they were on a K through eight, so. I wouldn't be surprised if they saw some of this stuff in the next few years. I think I'll hold up on Manchester, just.
I think that the wires got crossed, lost, and I think that's a really good idea to get that to the next one, because.
I, I have no, so this is something that the department gave them an innovation ring to create this program. They're doing, they've announced it in the fall, you know, it's, it's, I'm not sure, at some point along the way, they seem to be, maybe something was missed in the process that they had to come for us for approval, but it's not a fly-by-night or anything, so I like the program, I think it's great, the department likes it, everybody's kind of a little worried, but if we want to get them here, they want to open it in the fall. So would it hold them back if we pushed it off in line?
I don't think it's going to take them back, I think that the work is, it's just additional information for them. Like we work, already we've seen work, and already we've spoke, but just to draw our eyes upon some of these. We want to do this presentation. And they want to do this presentation.
Yeah, I don't know what I'm moving, this, this is.
How, I'm, timing to maybe an issue, is it possible for us to present a email information on, on this so that we could give it a thumbs up to give them as much time as possible?
I have that presentation, I just, unfortunately, I didn't know that they had it.
I think, well, they said in their letter that somebody would be here, so I think the board members are, are just would like to ask some questions. But I think that the department, I just messaged the superintendent to see if, if she thinks it would be a problem. But I think she can, she might feel like it's people to zoom in.
Okay, okay, great.
Okay, that's our motion, so we're, we'll hold here.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll see, maybe if we, if they can get the.
I'm going to send a mail information so if they want to zoom in, they can do that, if that's, if you find out, start looking.
Yeah, anyway, I love the program, I think it's fabulous, but it could if we had more. For all members who don't know about it, that's the ability to ask questions. So we're going to hold that for a little bit, why don't we do the Home Education Advisory Council?
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. My name is April Hawaadi, and I am the chair of the Home Education Advisory Council. Thank you for adding us to your agenda today. The Home Education Advisory Council was established in nineteen ninety with the Home Education Law, RSA one ninety-three A, and our responsibilities that are prescribed in the administrative rules include recommending to the commissioner and the State Board of Education the desired changes and rules pertaining to home education, and providing an annual report to the State Board, which is why I'm here today. So there is a written report that has in the packet for all of you to review. I'm not going to read that verbatim, I'm going to try to hit the highlights.
Thank you.
Yes, I appreciate that. So one of the things we did is we reviewed best practices just for our council because we wanted to uphold a commitment to transparency, accessibility, accountability, and compliance with existing laws. And one thing that we often do in our discussions, because topics come up, and it's a great place to disseminate information, not only just among the home education community, but we have other educational partners represented at our meetings. And so it's a wonderful opportunity to collaborate. One of the rule change recommendations that we wanted to bring to the state board is a rule change, ED seven oh four point zero two, smaller F, admission to testing for home educated students. I do want to note, you know, if you're not aware, that ED seven oh four is currently in the rulemaking process now with the opposite of home education. So HEAC recommends waiving the requirement for the participating agency to sign off with its approval to allow sixteen and seventeen-year-olds home educated students to take the HICET and RGED and any other similar testing. And the reason for that is that we've heard from families that they believe that ED seven oh four point oh two is incongruent relative to home educated students, requiring an attestation from the participating agency to be admitted to testing. And in New Hampshire, parents are responsible for self-certify and the completion of a home education program. And they also issue certificates for youth employment, not school officials, not public school officials. So just looking to make that more in line with the other laws or rules that we have on the books. We've talked a lot about home, or we've talked about home education, we've talked about child funding, and a lot of discussion has been about how do school districts actively seek out and assess children with disabilities, you know, through age twenty-one, and that the school district does have that responsibility to identify children in need of special education, even if they're not currently receiving services. So the council has agreed that we need further discussions, research, and recommendations to clarify what information needs to be provided to parents regarding child funding and public school evaluations. Because just like we've heard from our counterparts in the school, don't want to miss any kids, home educators are going to say, wait, we don't want any kids to be in this now. So additionally, we would encourage school districts to provide special education therapies to home educated students under the Optional Services Law, which is RSA one eighty-nine colon forty-nine. Another thing that's a common topic in our meetings is there seems to be this wide, widespread public confusion about EFA and home education. And so that's, that is often in our conversations in our meetings. So the, and we're asked to clarify that. So the council made the following clarifications, and these clarifications were also made two years ago, in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. And they are, parents can choose, so this is the definition, these are the clarifications under RSA one ninety-three A. Parents can choose their child's curriculum, which does not need to be aligned with state standards. Two, parents have multiple choices for annual assessment, which need not be standardized testing and does not need to be the New Hampshire state assessments. Number three, parents are not required to submit any testing or assessment data to any department or agency of the state. Number four, parents have multiple choices for home education notification participating agencies, including a participating New Hampshire non-public school. The council recommends that any education program, whether a New Hampshire charter school, a program created by federal contract, or money, or other program of the state of New Hampshire that does not allow for these freedoms should not fall under RSA one ninety-three dash A home education. And rather than programs that do not adhere to the principles one through four mentioned above should be categorized under an alternative option to satisfy RSA one ninety-three colon A, which is the compulsory attempt of law. And we also had commendations, we really wanted to express our thanks to Mr. Timothy. Um, and we also had commendations, we really wanted to express our thanks to Mr. Timothy Carney, who is the New Hampshire ED Administrator of Educational Pathways, uh, for his support. Um, he's been instrumental and really such a gift as a liaison between the Commissioner and the council, so we'd like to publicly thank Mr. Carney. And we'd also like to, um, give our sincere thanks to two of our, um, legislators who are on the council, and that's Senator Ruth Ward and Representative Katie Pedernall. They have, um, come to us bringing, uh, legislation that's been proposed and how that may affect home education. And, um, there were two bills this year that particularly were of concern to home educators, and the first one was HB six twenty eight, which required certain non-public schools or education service providers that accept public funds to perform background checks on all employees and volunteers. The home education community considered the possibility, it could mean that they may be required to have background checks to teach their own children or to have other children in their home. Um, the other bill that was much discussion and concern was HB sixteen ten, and that was relative to standardized assessment data for participants in education freedom accounts. That included this statement, home education, home educated students shall contact their local school districts to participate in the statewide assessment. Now currently RSA one ninety three dash A does not mandate state assessment testing for home education students. Fortunately, both of these bills faced strong opposition from the home education community, which showed up in force and ultimately did not pass. Um, so as the number of home education students increase in the state, I think it's important that you know that HEAC is committed to serving the home education community and providing input not only to the Commissioner, but to the State Board of Education on arising issues and changes. And I'd like to thank you again for allowing us to come and present our annual report. We will continue to serve as a valuable resource for the home education community, education stakeholders, and the New Hampshire Department of Education. Any questions or comments?
Good. As I, as I mentioned with the previous folks who are here, I'm a big proponent of education closer to parents, so we imagine, I'm a supporter of school choice and home education. Um, a couple of things, one, the numbers, have they been growing? Have they been staying the same? Have they been dwindling as far as the number of, uh, home educated students in the state? I know we have the, the, because some of them just.
Right. I don't feel qualified to answer that question, I would ask you to ask someone from the department, because I don't.
Okay, okay. Um, you had mentioned earlier, Ross, uh, about special education identifying children with special education needs. Um, is the current process that a parent themselves would self-identify their, their student and then go for help? As opposed to, um, a more collaborative type of thing? I mean, how does that work now? How are the students identified?
Right, and I believe that's part of our question, uh, there are, I believe, some public notices that are required, but how does that actually trickle down to families? So families who don't, do not have children in the public school know about the, like, what is child funding? And what is the school, the public school's responsibility to children with disabilities? So I don't have the answer for that, we're seeking the same answer.
Okay. Thank you.
How many students in New Hampshire are home educated?
I do not have that data, I would ask you to ask someone at the department if you see.
They do, they does seem a little bit odd.
What was your, what was your question, Raj?
How many students are there?
We don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, we really, really don't know, the state doesn't actually, uh, uh, track an exact number of homeschool students, it's just the way, where parents have a right to homeschool. And, um, so we have a estimate for you guys and for.
You're part of each of these schools.
But we don't have a.
Right, but I would ask you, I don't keep the data, I don't know if Mr. Carney, maybe you want to ask him a question if he has the data to support that?
It's about five thousand each.
Roughly enough, not, not the intrusive, just.
Probably no. Sam, you, you want to come over here? I think it's the way with the homeschooling, you know, or something, notify us, or they can notify, um, the school district.
Right. It's not. Correct, where it's not an annual notification, it's a one-time notification. And some questions that we've heard at the meetings has been, are some home education students possibly transitioning over to the EFA program without notifying that they're ending their home education program?
Right. Yeah, so the chair is correct, we, we have an estimate, uh, schools report every year new notifications, uh, that includes public schools and non-public schools, and then my office on behalf of the Commissioner of Education, who's a, a participating agency, we also collect notifications. So, and sort of previous question, our notification numbers this year have gone up significantly. We don't know if that's simply people are choosing to notify their department versus notifying their public school, or if the numbers are actually increasing. We won't know until the schools report how children, to see if those numbers have gone up, because that's when schools report new home education notifications. And I think there's some education that needs to be done for the public schools, simply because, um, the numbers seem very high, and I'm wondering if it's reporting all home education, or home educating students in their district and not new notifications. So I think that has to be clarified with the district, hard to do this next reporting around in October, and I think that will help clarify what the numbers look like before. So we do not have a good estimate of the total number of home educated students because of the three disvalidations, it could be notified and that's a indicated. When people are transitioning from home education, they may not be aware that you need to terminate your home education program number one ninety three A, or participating EFA number four F. It's complicated, and there's a, I mean, I would really be interested to see it once all the, you know, numbers are in, because nationally, we know the last couple of years has been a little spike in home, uh, school students and. The last time I checked, our, our increase as compared to the same timeframe last year is up eighty percent. Just a little off, a long, but again, I don't know what's the cause of that, exactly. Just a little off, yes, which is, which is really big. We don't know if it's a measurement issue, or, I, I suspected some of both. I think we've seen an increase, um, I mean nationally, the data pretty clear, it's been big by, and home education's estimated different. Yeah. But we're pretty sure to say that's the cause.
So, but how do you, but, so, I, I'm, I'm new to this, so I'm trying to understand, i- there is no centralized, uh, test scoring, you know, that the C two qualify, uh, at the end of it, when they finished the twelfth grade? Uh, and, and, so, tell me about that, I, I, I'm actually new to this, so.
Right, so the parents have the option, once a child completes their home education program, to self-certify that the child has EFA.
Yeah.
So I believe that's just an innovation process.
So there's no transcripts, there's no, is it?
There's no transcripts that are required in current session.
Right, so nothing is submitted to the state or the resident district at the beginning or during home education. It's completely the property of the parents now, it's further clarified basically in, uh, in the law. And so it's, it's just the parent provides us with a statement saying, in their opinion, the child has completed equivalent of high school, uh, education experience, and then that's completion, and so then they consider, um, had to admit compulsory tenancy requirements, so they went along their true, once new education.
But when you apply for a university, how do they complain? There's nothing.
Oh, Raj, you're opening a whole bunch of, uh, topics, but I, so.
Right.
Okay, it's up to the university.
Yeah, it's up to the university, so the homeschool parents, um, so there's a whole support group of homeschool parents, they're, they're, there is, um, they have their own measures of academic progress, they, um, have portfolios, they, they, they track progress. Um, even though it's not necessarily the same way that the schools track progress, so, um, there is a, there's a very good pathway to homeschool, to get to college. Um, colleges are now pretty adept, they say, so homeschooling has become so popular, even if it's a tiny fraction of schooling, that I think all colleges now have a pretty good understanding of, of having dealt with homeschool parents, having dealt with these assessments, it's a pretty standard thing now. And some of these homeschoolers, I mean, these kids are really impressive, you know?
Yeah, I know, I know, because I approach some of the, the, the vortex and all that, so I know it's, yeah.
Right, and what we're hearing, um, as home education parents and families is that colleges are now actively seeking out home educated students.
Yeah.
So there's absolutely opportunity for, you know, the children to go on a various way of pathways.
Is, is it fair to say that there's no one size fits all?
Absolutely.
I mean, I, I, I think I've heard the term from a, a homeschooling parent that I knew, that you meet one homeschool student, you meet one homeschool student.
Yeah, right.
Right.
And, and to your point, I know of several, I said just anecdotally, that are just crushing it, fantastic. But I assume that because it, there's the freedom to teach the way you want to teach as a parent, however you set that up with a guideline, that you get all sorts of, uh, I won't say results. But those metrics, are they, maybe, maybe that's what we've been talking about, but are any of those metrics available through the homeschoolers, maybe not through the, the state reporting, I get that, but. This information here that was provided, would that show the information on results and success rates and all of that?
Um, I personally do not know anyone tracking that data in the home education community. Um, I, you know, as far as, because people like data, right? One thing I would say is, um, two of this year's, what was that, the presidential scholars?
Up to the years.
Were home educated students. I mean, so there you go there, and talking about individual education, you know, in a public school, we hear about IEPs. When you have a home educated students, they, that each student, even if they're in the same home, are each getting individualized education. And sometimes you find that a student in the home may not need the same supports and services that they may have needed in a school. And that can make a huge difference to that student and a family to allow them to be in the community and work at their own pace, excel at what they, and support their journey.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, have a wonderful day.
Thank you. I appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Uh, so.
It's every cent, I mean, the dollars and cents of the higher cost to society who's that much less.
They're, they're educating the homeschoolers, they're, 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 they're probably taxers, so. All right, so we reached out to Manchester District, uh, there was a communication late in the process after this, at this letter, that they really wanted more time to prepare presentations, and that's why they were here. But we got somebody on the district who's, uh, on Zoom, could you want to take five minutes? Is everybody ready for a, a short break? We'll just, we'll come back and get to her when you come back, just take a quick refreshment break, and then we'll be right back.
You're welcome.
Raj, that's why I always come with that.
I know, I should get a look, all looked up, huh?
Thanks. Hi, uh, thanks for joining us. So, Lydia, I think, um, a couple of board members have just weren't familiar with the proposal, so. That, we don't think that, I know that there was some disa, uh, maybe some misunderstanding about how big a presentation that the board wanted, but I don't think we need the entire fully detailed presentation. I'm quite familiar with the program, and I know the department is, and we've worked very closely, so maybe just an overview for the board of, you know, how it started, um, what your plans are, how many kids, how it's gonna work, just, just the basics.
Sure, yes, and thank you for the opportunity to speak, so, um, our, the Manchester community has been very interested for years in, uh, the creation of a dual language program. Um, I think we have over two thousand Spanish speaking families in our city, um, and a lot of immigrant bilinguals are English learners. So, um, when we were offered the opportunity through a New Hampshire Department of Ed innovation grant to explore the possibility and viability of beginning a dual language program in Manchester, we jumped on that. And we received some, um, preliminary funding from the Department of Education to, um, hire a consultant who could kind of walk us through this process. So over the last year and a half, we have worked with that consultant to explore the national standards around dual language, to understand what it means, because it really is an umbrella term with many variations. Um, and then also to explore what the professional licensure should look like. We've done training with our school-based teams to select curriculum and to develop, have scope and sequence for this classroom. And the model that we've landed on is, um, a two-way dual immersion program, meaning that fifty percent of the students in the classroom would be from homes where English is the primary language, and the other fifty percent of the students in the classroom would be from homes where Spanish is the primary language spoken. And so it's a real mixture, fifty fifty, um, two-way exchange. And the model actually would begin with two kindergarten classes this fall at Bakersville Elementary School, um, and it's a ninety-ten model, meaning that ninety percent of the instruction actually happens in Spanish and ten percent happens in English. Um, we expect that that might actually be, be a little bit of flex, depending on the bilingual people in the building, but that is the, the core program and our goal. Um, and then over the progress of the programs, uh, which our school board here in Manchester has agreed to over six years, that, um, ratio shifts, so by ten percent each year, so that by fifth grade, uh, there's a fifty fifty percent, um, instructional model and delivered in Spanish and in English. We've had incredible interest from our families, in fact, we had to develop a lottery system to sort of manage the enrollment and interest. So we have, uh, enough students to fill two classrooms and then a waiting list with almost two more classrooms, so we really hope to kind of expand on this over the next coming years. I think part of the confusion today was that this is a new program for New Hampshire, so there's actually an RSA on the books, one eighty nine nineteen, which is the subject of the letter we submitted to you, which says that the school district has to seek State Board approval to run instructional programs in languages other than English. So that's why we sort of reached out, um, but then we've been in close contact with, uh, with the Commissioner and other members of the team there at the Department of Ed all along our, um, development phase, to kind of communicate our plan, and the, uh, deputy, uh, sorry, the Commissioner has given us his provisional approval. Um, but we really wanted to make sure the board was aware and kind of, um, officially request that permission and approval from you, um, to run the program. Um, it's, it is exciting, I think there are many states, uh, only just a handful left that don't offer dual language programs, forty-three other states do. There's a lot of educational research to support the success of dual language model. In fact, um, the more I learn about it, I really appreciate the way that actually the Spanish language is very sort of transparent and an easier way to teach, um, initial literacy to students, and then they very quickly can leverage their skills to trans-language and learn that second language, um, English in this case. So we're really excited, our community is excited, and I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Um, I, this is extraordinary, and I'm thrilled that you're, you're, you're moving this program forward. Um, I'm gonna play devil's advocate for just a moment, if I'm one of those, um, uh, children in the classroom that is an English speaker, um, and I'm a young kindergarten student, what kind of monitoring is going to go on for your English speakers who are in a classroom where eighty percent of the time, the instruction is in Spanish?
Yeah, so, and we met with our consultant, um, over the last two months to develop a really comprehensive kind of assessment system, so there's the academic piece, and then there's a social emotional piece that we've been very transparent with, with families, because there will be frustration and we anticipate that, so. Ensuring that as much as we can to hold that instructional model, because we know it is so effective, but of course, um, if students are, you know, having a difficult time or hard day, there will be English speakers there to support them, support them during this transition. But we do have, um, some assessments selected to monitor the literacy, literacy progress of students and academic progress overall. Um, I would say the, the research, uh, also shows us that at the third grade point, we might see actually students in a dual language class underperforming as compared to peers in monolingual classes. But by the time, um, we hit that fifth grade assessment, they are often, um, exceeding those in monolingual classrooms. So we've been really transparent with parents about what they can expect, there will be some frustrations, um, it's really that, a kind of period where you're negotiating the two languages, and we just have, uh, a robust plan in place to support academics, the language development, but also the social emotional needs of kindergartners who, which this is a very different approach.
Thank you.
So, why would a student, oh, who's an English speaking student, want to join, uh, as one of the fifty percent where the instruction is in Spanish and, you know, maybe, you may, I, I'm sure there's a reason, I, I, from social thing, or how do you even pick those students?
Yeah, so we held a, a series, many, many community meetings, beginning way back in the fall to kind of leave interest, and it's interesting, um, it was actually the, the families from English speaking homes who signed up first and filled the spots first. And what they expressed to us was that they are very interested, they sort of acknowledged that this is a global economy and that being bilingual is an important skill. Um, and so they really were excited about being able to provide that opportunity to their, to their child. Um, so I think that's one of the benefits, and, um, it's been really nice exchange to see families and, and subsequent meetings from English-speaking homes and Spanish-speaking homes. We've run meetings where we are simulcasting simultaneous interpretation in two languages, and the blend is already, well, working well. And I think people are really leading into this, um, multicultural, multilingual-like future where all are now.
So, to be clear, if I'm hearing this right, it's the goal not only to have the young Spanish-speaking children learn English, but the young English children to learn Spanish?
Exactly.
Okay.
And that is the definition of the model I showed, which is the two-way immersion, which, um, again, in all of the longitudinal research that began twenty years ago, it's proven to be kind of like the catalog, Cadillac model of dual language programs, the most effective. Because there's that, like, beautiful exchange where the English-speaking students are gifting their language to the Spanish-speaking students and vice versa. Um, and so there's a lot of intentionality around how teachers in the classroom are their language peers to both, like, extend and then confirm, affirm their, um, their languages.
Does, does this, I'm sure the data's in there if I, if I dig deep enough, but just a quick question. Does this pretty much mean that there's more young English-speaking children that will be learning Spanish than there will be young Spanish children, just by the nature of populations, learning English?
That's a good question. I think so, in, at least in Manchester, and I think why this program is so important to us, we have, um, a really large group of emergent bilinguals, so students who come from Spanish-speaking homes who are going to learn English in our public schools. And so I think what this, this program really provides, as you say, is that also the opportunity for us to acknowledge and realize the assets of those Spanish-speaking students and have them share that gift with our English-speaking students. So, they too are able to develop bilingual, bilingualism. So, each group comes out with multilingual skills.
And, and I'm sure there's a very large population of young Spanish speakers, but is there a, a general, not, not gonna quiz you on exact statistics, but just a rough percentage, given the nature of the, the metropolitan area there, that you can speak?
Yeah, so, uh, we are around one, two thousand of our fif- uh, twelve thousand families are from Spani- have identified Spanish as the primary language spoken in their homes.
Two thousand and twelve thousand, yeah, that's, that's huge.
That was another twelve thousand.
Thank you.
Quick one, uh, you said it starts with a ninety-ten split between, uh, Spanish and English when you start. Can you hear me at all? No?
I'm sorry, I just had a, uh, I didn't for a minute, but I think it's okay now.
Yeah, you, you said there is a ninety-ten split in language, that they start in the, in the preschool or at the, at what, in the first grade? So, what if a student joins somewhere in the grade? Can they, is there an option to join this program if they've just moved in or something like that?
So, there are pretty strict guidelines, um, based on the national, um, guidebook and standards that we're, we're referencing. Um, students can join through first grade. And then after that, really, the gap is too wide for them to catch up with kindergarten. So, we're starting with a kindergarten class. I think other states start with preschool. Um, I think we would have chosen to do that if we had universal preschool in New Hampshire, but we're gonna begin with kindergarten and then, um, loop up in first grade. So, next year, we'd be able to accept new students into the cohort, and then after that, we would not be able to.
Okay, okay, fine, thanks. Wonderful program, thank you. Okay.
Yeah, thank you, we're really excited. And of course, um, I, I know we'd love to come back and report on it, and we're working hard with the team at the, uh, the Department of Education to kind of design what that program evaluation will look like. Um, so it's all new to us, right? We need to, we would also probably create a long-term plan to work with credentialing around what licensure might look like for a dual language teacher. But at the moment, we have developed a job description based on, um, the national standards. And we also, of course, are, um, looking for teachers who have the elementary certification as well.
Lydia, I, I just have a question about your breakdown. So, you guys are gonna do fifty-fifty in every class, um, between English language learners and English speakers. Is that always, do you anticipate hard fifty-fifty? Because you may have, as this program hopefully expands, not enough of one group versus another. You may have more interest from one category than others. So, how does that look if, depending on interest of, of, of students?
Yeah, that's definitely something we worry about, but there, there are some models, um, and flexibility. So, in terms of efficacy, there's a little bit of science behind it. Um, the research shows that we could go, uh, down to a third, or two, a third and two-thirds. And then it really kind of throws off the, um, it just would throw off the model because there aren't enough adequate language peers to really support the bilingual development. So, um, there is a little bit of flexibility there, but I just don't anticipate that being a problem because, uh, you know, we were certainly worried about that when we began the process, but then as we surveyed the community, it began to send out interest forms. We've been ple- pleasantly surprised by the balance of families from English and Spanish-speaking homes. So, so far, it is, um, it has worked out really beautifully, and we're excited about that. So, we're, we're nervous about that, and of course, finding staff who are qualified. And our national consultant just sort of assured us, if you build it, they will come. And she is, she's been right. People are ready to relocate to New Hampshire to be part of this program, so we're really excited about it. And, um, professionals from the, um, multi-state bilingual educators association, so a group of kind of New England and a few other southern states have actually reached out to us because they've heard about it in the press to kind of wrap around support. So, um, we feel very supported and excited.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear there's some flexibility there, because I thought that would be important, um, just in case the numbers don't match up exactly fifty-fifty in every class going forward. But I, I like the idea, I mean, you guys have clearly put a ton of research, um, and prep into this program. I would think that you're on the right track in terms of thinking that this is something that will become attractive to parents who are living in school districts. I mean, you know, big city school districts have challenges and have, um, sometimes have to shake things up and do things a little differently to, you know, signal the parents, hey, we're listening, here's an innovative, new way of doing things. And this would seem to be just the kind of thing that obviously a lot of parents are looking for, because you're already subscribed and avoid list. So, um, yeah, hopefully this scales up nicely and kids aren't waiting too long to get into it.
So, after English and Spanish, what's the largest spoken language after that in Manchester?
Or in the schools. I think she's frozen.
What was that? Yeah, in the, in the schools, that must be. Or, or is there a, if there is a?
It used to be French decades ago, but, um, that's, I'm sure no longer the case.
French in the past.
Yeah.
Well, I think we lost her.
Yeah, she's, I think she's, I think she's frozen. Unfortunately, I think it's on her end, not ours.
She can probably hear us. Um, alright, well, I.
She says she's frozen.
Yeah, she froze up. So, what do you guys think? Anybody have anything?
I have a motion.
Okay.
Um, approve the Manchester School District Dual Language Approver, and ask for RSA one eighty-nine colon nineteen.
Anybody have a second? Yeah. Our seconds, all in favor?
I, I like.
Alright, you can, let, let me know, Deputy Commissioner, but I got the green light. So, the reason why there's a state board of ed approval process for a foreign language instruction, uh, or for instruction to be done in a language other than English rather than a separate class to learn a foreign language, and the we is because one of our tasks as the State Board of Education from the early twentieth century, so you gotta think back to the nineteen-teens and nineteen-twenty's. Um, there was a nineteen twenty-four, I think, was when the Congress passed this big immigration law to cut down. There was a huge concern about Americanization. And it's in the state statutes as one of the state board's responsibilities to make sure kids are Americanized, meaning they learn American culture and they don't become Balkanized and, and just have their own culture. So, part of that was the state public schools would teach in English and not teach in German or Italian or, uh, you know, some other part of the world. So.
Do you like?
Yeah, very much in, in Manchester, there was that tension. So, so that's the root of it. And I think, and, and so people kind of forget that those laws are still on the books. So, they were like, hey, let's go with this, wait a minute, we're not sure we can do it.
I like what they're doing there, it's always gonna say yes, approve. I, I guess my question from a financial standpoint. Twelve thousand students, two thousand Spanish speakers, is it more cost-effective? Cost-effective only, just talking about tax dollars and everything, or even efficiencies, to teach two thousand children speak English as opposed to twelve thousand students integrating them all and teaching both? If the goal is to teach those two thousand English, you see what I'm saying? It's like, if you put a lot of.
Well, so you've got, you need to weigh, there's the, there's the financial piece, and then there's the societal piece.
Exactly, no, I'm just.
So, you know, it's sort of.
That's why I didn't bring it up, but it is.
Yeah, it's real, it's real.
Also, one of the things that we're looking at, at the three oh sixes, you know, you've got a foreign language component in there. And one of the things that I think has been sort of encouraged from the state level, um, of all times is that, oh, your foreign language starts in high school, or maybe middle school, and.
When the best brain is in elementary.
Exactly.
Well.
Language acquisition.
Language acquisition and acquisition happens best before you. And so for them to be starting a program like this for kindergarten, I think is appropriate. I would love it if, whether they do this program or not, or school district said, you know, let's rethink the way we teach our language, let's start offering it in first grade or kindergarten and not in eighth grade. You'd get a much better return on that, if we reverse that. But it is a, it's a question. So, anyway, I gotta move on.
In the nineteen nineties, I ran a four and after-school language program at my local elementary school that initially was just six families, and the superintendent thought, no, that, and he asked me, can we make this a school-wide program? And it was really important to parents, and that was in the nineteen nineties, and in the, in the X of Massachusetts.
Well, there's, and there's a ton of district, big city districts that are, that are doing these dual language ninety-ten programs around the country, so it's catching on. Alright, so we don't have, we have twenty more minutes till our public hearing, so ten, we're up.
What am I looking for, Tim?
What's that?
I'm like, what am I looking for?
We're gonna do edify first.
Edify, you have those key?
So, we need to remove edify from the table from last month.
So, who?
Anybody have a second?
Yep.
Our seconds, all in favor?
Aye. So, for our administrative educational pathways, and we have a Learn Everywhere initial application from edify for a financial literacy quarter credit course. And they provided some updated information for our application for the board and consultant.
Alright, um, did everybody get the updated stuff in the packet and go through it? It was more spelled out than it was last time, so. Anybody have any questions for the edify folks?
I guess I have one question for us.
Okay.
That if you look at the rubric and it, and the, the green, the gold, and the red, and how much was red because it wasn't, it wasn't, um, applicable to the program? It was in our standards, but it wasn't addressed.
Hmm.
How does that influence our, our thoughts?
What do you think?
I, I, I would love to see how it compares to other programs that we have approved and what, what is happening in the, the public school classroom.
I'm only talking about a quarter credit here, aren't we?
Yeah, so, I think that's part of it, is that their, um, their gain is mapped and modeled for, um, for quarter credit, for a very small portion of, of the whole thing. And I think that's part of the discussion that, you know, we're still trying to work through with, um, with Learn Everywhere is, on one hand, you know, the point of the program is to say, is not to return other programs into classes, high school classes, but to say, if kids are already doing this, then, and they can check and show us that they're getting these, um, competencies, and we can measure, okay, what portion of those competencies, you know, what portion of the credits do those competencies have to, um, then we're just, acknowledge, part of Learn Everywhere is to acknowledge that, or have a record that, you've earned these competencies outside of the classroom, so you should get credit for those competencies, regardless of whether it's a half credit, whole credit, whatever. Um, I think that's the original intention of the program, and we've had all these programs come to us that are either a half credit or a full credit. Um, this is the first one to come for us with a quarter credit. So, that's a discussion I think we should have at the board is, do we wanna be approving, you know, that small portion of credits? And they're gonna, they still have three quarters of the credits to make up somehow. So, how valuable is this to a student when they're still gonna have to take a class or, or another one everywhere or do something else outside?
I suppose then that, that is the beauty of it, that, that, that puts the decision-making in the hands of, of the parent.
Right.
And if that, if this is a, if this is an augmentation to something.
Right.
Um.
I'll, I'll throw out something differently. Is it, is it incumbent on us to ask for more information, more robustness to a proposal to gain that half or full credit? Or do we open ourselves up to more opportunities, more programs by having it, well, I must say, a little less robust? But I mean, just, just more choices and, and not as, not as rigorous?
Well, and I'm not sure rigorous, I know what you mean, but.
But yeah, I didn't mean rigorous.
Yeah, not, not as complete.
It's, it's comprehensive.
Not as comprehensive, right, so. And I, I think I come down on, because I've, I've thought about this too, with this, with applications. First one we've had for a quarter credit, but then a half credit, my gut response is, well, that's not enough. I'm like, I'm losing a half credit. But in thinking about Learn Everywhere and just what we, like, what the whole purpose of the program was, is to acknowledge the learning that you're doing already. Right? It's not to steer kids into a particular class or course or something, but it's to say, look, if you can prove that you've earned these credits, or earned these competencies, that you've achieved them, you've got a measure for measuring it, then we're gonna reward you for that. And if you decide that you're gonna cobble together the credits in a different way, I think what we, what they've given us here, kind of, one of your thought on this, looks like this gives us a better picture, is kind of what we were asking for last time, of knowing exactly which competencies, right? So, it makes it harder to cobble together credit for a whole course, um, if you're getting only a quarter credit. But we can look at which competencies they've earned here, which credits they've earned. And then look at our other financial literacy ones and see, okay, are they overlapping? Or are they complementary? They may be able to put together two of these online ones that we have through Learn Everywhere, this one and another one, and need it. And may not, if they overlap, you know? So, if they're all beginning of course competencies, then they're, you know, this isn't gonna get them very far. We're still gonna have to take more, but is it really our job to say, you've gotta get this much of a percentage of the whole class, you know, traditional, uh, high school course? Or is it our job to say, you can demonstrate, you've got it, and you will acknowledge that you've got it, and how you couple together the rest of them?
I think that this meets students, some students where they are.
Yeah.
And based, the, the beauty of it only being a quarter credit is, um, a student may not realize that this is something that they have the interest in or could be proficient in, and, but based on the vehicle used to, to deliver the information, you attract certain students who then later realize, wow, I can do this, and spend again the three-quarter or two other half-credit courses elsewhere. Um, it may be a good intro for some kids based on, again, the vehicle that tree.
Right. I mean, we have this discussion with, um, what's the first one we did for?
They're money, they're, they're also a quarter credit.
Yeah. Uh, we have this. Uh, we had this discussion with them, and about this period thing, uh.
Yeah, I think your point's well taken, that if we have a number of quarter credit financial literacy courses, can you take two and fulfill the requirements of a half credit?
Well, I, and I think.
Or not, because we, I think, because it's a young program, kinds of an issue we run into as we move forward, but I think it's what, um, and if, and if, if I provided the cross mark to competencies,
Yeah.
I would like to get that from Fit Money as well, and maybe clear so students and families can evaluate and say, if I take these two, I think they'll have credit, or no, they're duplicate.
I think that's. I, I think that is super important.
Yeah.
We have that on our Learn Everywhere website.
Exactly, yeah.
That tells parents, okay, you can't take both of these to get a half credit, they each cover the same quarter credit competency, so you're still stuck at a quarter credit, but parents have to know that.
Correct.
Um, and otherwise, we're gonna be, parents will misunderstand and think I can just add them up when they can't, because they're covering the same thing. But I think what then we talked with Fit Money about, and they were interested in this, is, uh, you know, when it takes a long time to build these programs, is to come back with other portions, right, to come back and say, okay, now we're gonna give you this other quarter credit to get to the half, and we're gonna give you the other half credit to get to the full, so you can do all of it online, and I think we'll get there as the program expands.
If you can create a map of all the different courses, and what kind of topic it covers, you know, there are two courses that cover a bunch of things,
Mm-hmm.
Because you can see this or this.
Mm-hmm.
Are the same credit, but if you can create a map of all the courses, and what kind of, at least visually I can see, you know, right now this is just a list of courses, we don't know.
Yeah.
And the overall.
See the rubric.
Yeah, just the rubric, yeah.
Is that available? I mean, I. Sure.
Yeah, because it's only each topic, you know, the discipline, technology, finance, all these components.
So, this particular program has different skills that are learned, or are different subject matter that's, that's, that's rough.
Yeah, yeah.
Then a quarter credit is a supplemental quarter credit, if it's the same. Maybe we'll build it up a little bit, maybe a bus, make it a half credit, and the parent gets a choice between the two, is that a problem?
The, the point here is that, well, what's, uh, Drew was saying is if, if I did not know that, uh, they both were teaching the same thing, I would take two, two of these courses, and so I would, I would sort of eat at the thing.
Yeah, yeah.
So can I know upfront?
Yeah.
That they both are kind of covering similar topics, so they will have a map of it, right?
Yeah, I think that's just, and, and we can do that on the state side, um, I thi- I think that's just really important, I, I have no problem saying, look, if you, you've come through, you've gone through the progress, and you, then you know that you've met these competencies, um, and approving them for those that they, that they can provide students, although I think going forward, we may wanna think about putting in a cool, like a minimum quarter credit, I, I don't think I'd like to have somebody come in and say, well, you've got ten percent of a credit. What kind of value are you really providing to your kids?
Actually, we've been motioned to take a lot of time.
Already did, you voted for it?
Okay.
It was a, you know, very quick.
But I think you seconded it, wasn't it?
Rob seconded it, or did?
I was asleep, it was a little too sleepy.
Oh, Rob, yeah, Rob. It was a, it was, yes. All right, so they're off the table, so any other thoughts or discussion? Any questions for edify folks? For very personal way.
I move that the State Department of Education approved the edify, Inc. Learn Everywhere initial application.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congrats, guys, um, and I just wanna add for, for you, in fact, and you don't have to respond to this, but, um, for all these programs, we, we love to see more, so at some point down the road, I know it takes a long time to develop video games and all that kinda stuff, um, if it's in your future to say, you know what, we can do this, the next twenty five percent, and come back with a new game or a longer game, I think we'd be very open to that, um, that, that would help students a lot, so.
That's, that's definitely our final line, so.
Okay, awesome. All right, thanks a lot, congrats.
Congrats.
Thank you.
Um, all right, so Tara, is she on?
So this is the first of two applications, one initial, one renewal from World Academy. Uh, this first one will discuss is a new one, initial application for their Algebra Two program. Tara, is available, hopefully, please answer any questions you may have.
I, I have no questions on this, um, anybody else have questions, I, we're familiar with you guys, uh, so.
We got some, some great feedback from the peer review team, the features, um, providing great feedback, and, uh, World Academy really incorporated that feedback, is, we don't, that's, the process is working, but I.
Yeah. Yeah.
Exactly, so for the renewal, uh, how many students have been taking this course so far?
Yeah.
Um, so they haven't closed out their school year, so they haven't issued any certificates by the time, but, but yeah, Tara would be able to let you know that, I guess.
I don't know, but how many have they?
Hi, thank you everyone for this opportunity, um, I'm Cara Odenki, and this is Shawnee Legear, she's our math department head and the instructor of the course. Um, we currently have ten students completing our geometry course today, um, and we have, um, thirteen students complete our Algebra One course for this school year, and then the Algebra Two course is a new application that we're hoping to offer next year for our most accelerated students.
Wonderful.
I move the State Department of Education approve the World Academy Learn Everywhere Algebra Two initial application.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Congrats. Is it for the new one or for the old?
We have two.
Uh, that was, that was just for the new one, so we'll do the renewal separate.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for the application. Glad to see it working out, um.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thrilled to see your numbers, um, where are your students coming from?
So our school is located in Nashville, New Hampshire, but we have students from a number of different communities in the surrounding area.
Just curious if any of them are involved in the after school program.
Right.
Yeah, so you, you've got ten, what, what, fifteen kids who are engaged, or thirteen, how many students in total in the program, the two classes?
Twenty-three total in both programs this school year.
That's awesome, and any, when does your enrollment start for next year?
So, um, we're currently doing our scheduling and courses, um, but we'll start in August, so the official school year.
Wonderful, and so do you know what your, what your enrollment looks like for next year yet?
We're probably looking at roughly twenty-six students that will be, um, between the three courses that we're hoping to offer, including that Algebra Two.
Wonderful, wonderful.
So is this on site, students come on site or are they online?
Yep, it's onsite, so it's through our, um, we have a K through A school, so it's our middle school students that are on our accelerated math pathway, math track.
I move that the State Department of Education approve the World Academy Algebra One and Geometry Learn Everywhere renewal application.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, guys, congratulations.
Thanks. Keep, keep doing the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for this opportunity.
No, thank you for putting in the application and for connecting with the program, it's nice to see you guys doing it.
Enjoy your summer.
Angela, is Phil on, do you have?
Let me check if he's on. Do not see him.
Uh, so Tim, I just, I expected, uh, another board member here.
Hmm.
Uh, so after Winero got approved, uh, my kid did it, my, my, my youngest did Winero camp
Mm-hmm.
for the summer, and loved it, and has signed up for the camp again this summer, and in the course of all this, they recruited my wife as a board member, so I'm not gonna be voting on this.
Yeah.
Uh, so Phil is trying to zoom in.
Is he? Okay.
Yeah.
I'll keep an eye out for him. It's over there.
Yeah.
So you move forward, just hold on to vote?
Let, let's hold on to vote, we're waiting for Phil to sit down for the vote, but we can do a presentation.
Okay, so again, this is our last Learn Everywhere for the day, uh, this is Winero's Academy, so renewing their program. Uh, unfortunately, Dan, Karen is unavailable, it's the last day of school, so he's unavailable, uh, but Danielle is here from New Hampshire, FAA, what is it?
Uh, New Hampshire Department of Transportation Bureau of Aeronautics. Yeah.
Uh, who can speak to the, the, this type of program, she's very familiar with it, I guess, I'm just moving forward with the, some of the, the other one, uh, for, for going to first one.
So, good morning, um, so I'm not the applicant, I, um, one of my roles at the Department of Transportation Bureau of Aeronautics is aviation education, um, and through a meeting with the governor's office, we found
Yeah.
um, about the Learn Everywhere program that, um, a light bulb went off in my administrators that, um, had, thinking this is how we're gonna get aviation and education out, um.
See what you're doing, Tim, trust you, light bulbs are going on.
Yes, and through, um, the help with Tim, we now have two aviation applications approved, um, this one, Winero Aviation, um, Ace Academy is up for its five-year renewal, um, we're done with the one-year probation. They're starting their twenty twenty-four session, um, July eighth, uh, last year there was over a hundred kids who participated at, um, this Ace Academy. So, I, again, I'm not the applicant, but, um, I do go up to the Ace Academy and I speak at Career Day to let people know that, um, you can love aviation and not be a pilot.
I was gonna say, do you fly?
Did you, do you fly? I do not, um, so through, um, my connections, um, with aeronautics, I was able to, um, go online and get my A-truss certificate with a drone pilot, so I'm a I can fly it recreationally, can't fly it commercially, but, um, nope, I am not, I'm not a fixed wing pilot at all, so.
So, I was gonna ask you, what are the, the things that, uh, that is covered in this course?
Um.
Flying lessons, or is it?
Yes, yes, so, um, and Dan actually with the, with drones being so popular now, um, he actually has started a drone program as well. Um, so part of Career Day is that, um, Dan gets a whole bunch of different um, careers through aviation, um, government, state, FAA comes up from Vermont and Mass, he gets, uh, different branches of the military to come up and fly in. Um, he has pilots, um, who did it privately, who did it commercially, um, he has, he has a diff- he has a bunch of different um, aviation aspects where the students can then talk to people who are in the career field, and to understand, you know, I may not, I love aviation, but I may not be a pilot for whatever reasons, but here are my different avenues, and through this Ace Camp, um, Dan does that along with, um, engineering and drones, and, um, it's a whole bunch of, it, it's literally aviation one-on-one crammed in about two different to get these, to get these kids, um, introduced to aviation.
Not a simulation going on, I'm sure?
Yes, yes, yep, these kids are definitely, um, more knowledgeable about aviation when they graduate than when they start.
Hey, Phil. All right, any, buddy, have any questions?
I move the State Department of Education approve the Winero Ace Academy's Learn Everywhere renewal application.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
So my daughter's in the middle of, um, actually tw- in the last quarter, her, her in core helicopter training.
All right, congrats.
So I think she went through school, you know, she graduated in two thousand seventeen, so she'll, this, this would have been probably very interesting to her.
Yes, yes, and that's also like one of, um, I, I know that, you know, there was over a hundred kids last year, but, um, Dan definitely has his hands full with that, um, but it, I wish that the opportunity was there, and I knew about it when I was a kid, because it, I literally go for Career Day, and I'm like, I feel like I messed up.
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, so my youngest did the, the summer camp here, and, I mean, off the charts, they get to fly, um, they get to do engineering, uh, the engineering stuff is amazing. And they learn, and we, and this is not the Learn Everywhere program, this is just a younger kids camp, that they learn, um, how to design planes, how to build stuff, uh, you can do all kinds of different, they have like three or four different categories of aviation industry instruction, so that, like, you don't have to be a pilot, and the same thing with the, like, the program in high school. Wanna do the aviation, that whole flying part, you can do that, but if you just wanna stay on the ground and do the engineering, and learn how aeronautics works, and engines and stuff like that, you can do that as well.
So how long until we get more, every airport in New Hampshire has a Learn Everywhere program?
I'm working on it.
All right.
Where are you based, with what town?
Um, so I'm right here in Concord, um, so I work.
Another course, I'm sorry, where do you teach, for the campus?
Oh, so this is, um, yeah, so.
Oh, she, she's with the State Department of Transportation, but the Win, the Winero was Laconia.
Yeah.
Win, is that?
Yes, at Laconia Airport, yep, and, um, at the March Board of Education meeting, we had our first place school approved, um, which is also based at Laconia Airport, so
Laconia, okay.
now it's just.
Working on replicating.
Yes, yes, and it aviation right now is, um, struggling with the lack of employees, so it's very, it's very hard to get ahold of somebody and say, okay, I'm coming to your airport, I need with you, but I'm on it.
We are looking for drone certification.
Yes.
To enter into Learn Everywhere as well.
Awesome. Have you reached out to San Enz?
I have not.
Should look, the San Enzo has a drone summer camp.
Oh, okay.
And they, and for, for high school kids, you can go learn how to build a drone, you can learn all the aviation stuff, uh, all the rules, you, they actually have kits that's, by the end of the summer, you've built a drone and you're flying it, so.
We have, I have met with, um.
I have, I mean, why not, we should see if, see if we can create something out of that, we're already doing it.
I had a preliminary meeting with Southern Bank University about their own program, aviation program as well, so, just waiting for your back.
So those are the aviation schools in Nashua, are they, that in, that's, uh?
Yes.
Yes.
The, with the whole, I think the whole campus shut down or something, so they have?
Yes, yes. Yep, yeah, I don't know much about that, that was before my career here at DOT, um, but it's, it's kind of a shame, but you know, SNU is, um, trying to pick up you know, that, the aviation
Yeah.
lack of education with Daniel Weiser closing, so I do know that SNU is, is trying to
That's my surprise, that's.
Try, yeah, get that running, and Nashua Community College also has, um, an aviation program as well, so.
I mean, Nashua is just a, it's an obvious location for a Learn Everywhere program, and multiple aviation, uh, industries there, so.
Uh, Mayor Van Mallett, I, school district has, has a, has a drone program, public school district, so, so it's in some public schools as well, which is exciting.
Yep, yeah, um, so we actually have a Hoppington High School student, um, job shadowing sporadically, probably with the Bureau of Aeronautics this summer, and, um, he is actually heading his, um, high school, he lives in Hoppington, and he actually founded and is chair of an after school aviation program at his high school, so, yeah.
Good school, that's right.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And I will see you guys soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Tim, now we're up to these, uh, non-public.
Public hearing?
Oh, right, public hearing.
There's, there's nobody signed up to speak, but I.
Yeah, but let's do it, uh, so we're gonna open officially the public hearing on visual arts teaching. Nobody's signed up? Okay, Phil.
John told.
My, I think Phil has some, who was it, oh, John.
Sorry, I gotta jump back to my other meeting, I have one more. Okay, Phil, thanks for your help.
Well, see you, Phil.
No, absolutely, text me if you need anything else.
See you, Phil.
Thank you, bye.
Bye, Phil. John should come in with that, I will just.
So, this is a request from Swampscott River Academy to add uh grades five and six to their approved seven through twelve grade offerings. Um, and working through this process, John um is aware of this, that they had, when they went for renewals last year, they the the application that came in was seven through twelve. So, that's what the board, I put forward in the board approved. Um, they are approved for five through twelve through our special ed for as a private provider. So, it's just an omission in the application process. So, this is really just correcting that. Um, that's a little just bit of backstory on. Great. Uh, about, okay, so Swampscott River Academy.
So, so you said they were approved uh for to provide special ed services for five.
They are.
So, so they have they had grade five and and six students in the building?
I do not know. John can speak to that.
Nope, nonsense. It's very rare that we uh and hello everyone.
After.
Uh, uh, it's very rare, it's very rare that we have a fifth and sixth grader um would be referring to us.
But I wanted to make sure that those grades were there in ca- in case um our partner districts or D C Y F uh needed to place a child that was in fifth and sixth grade. Um, so we noticed the admission. We had originally been uh approved for fifth and sixth grade for non-public and for special ed. Um, and noticed um the prepare and just prepared the form. Um, and just wanted to restore those grades.
And so, who are your sending districts?
Um, we well, from all over the state, uh because it's we also have um a residential program um that we we get several of our students from up to sixty of those um students. Uh, so they can, they're from all over the state. Uh, we also have uh day school um students as well that come um from um Nashua and North Hampton, Hampton, um Dover, uh many of the the Seacoast region, school districts.
Is it is it safe to say that you have the infrastructure in place for those additional grades, the grades I think that you've been anticipating but were correcting for?
Yes, it's um it wouldn't um it wouldn't exceed the current cap of twenty-four students. So, it would just be if a student, if we had an opening and a fifth and sixth grader was there, then they would matriculate. Um, and we have the um the full uh curriculum in place.
So, you just said twenty-four, i- is that day students and r- residential students combined?
Correct.
Alright, I move that the state board accept and approves Swampscott River Academy's request to add grades five and six for the remaining term of their existing approval.
Second. Call up there.
Hi.
Hi.
All right.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thanks for what you.
Thank you. Thank you.
The Lincoln School of the Arts. So again, it's another it's another request to expand um the grades to add grades six, seven, and eight. The folks from the Lincoln School of Arts. I'm Paul Chambers. Um, I'm uh C L president.
I'm Jennifer Chambers, head of school. We saw you really recently.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we're back because we've had an enormous amount of interest at the middle school level to to expand our age range and from citizens of line. And believe strongly in starting that artistic training and um working with science engineering piece as well at a younger age so that we can have a little bit more time with them, to help them explore their interests and then develop those. So, we're coming back to you with requests to expand our our grades.
Can you can you tell a little bit about the the school? I missed the previous meeting.
Absolutely, sure. So, when we listen to the arts, what we're looking for is a really integrated curricular approach so that our teams build in curriculum together, the math teachers working with this with the music teacher and project-based learning. So, they're they're experiencing these content areas. Um.
We have community partners, so it's also based on experiential learning. A lot of our students have opportunities in the community. So, with downtown Lebanon, our affiliate with downtown Lebanon, you know, the green there, um, yeah, the gallery.
You mean the little Lebanon.
The gallery is uh
Yeah, I mean, the doctor, very good, so I should have.
You know, part of our passion for starting this school was around um developing, you know, certainly the hub of the arts in this community. Um, so all these other community organizations, so if one of our students wants to do um metal sculpture, we partner with they have a they can get that instruction there, they can do that.
That's the art center.
Even most of the center, the art center open there. Um, and um we have Lebanon Ballet, a lot of our students will be doing performances at the Lebanon Opera House. And so, it's kind of like the city of campus, it was based in on.
It's a full-time school.
Four hundred, yeah, yeah. Um, last year we didn't open because of our space wasn't ready yet. We didn't have um the elevator wasn't footed, so we held back a year.
Right.
Um, and uh, you know, but it's been, if we started an after-school program to sort of get interest, and that's where we found the interest was, you know. A lot of middle school, which younger students were probably was like, oh, we probably should.
And then in our upcoming summer camp, we have over sixty students that have signed up. So, that is an elementary and the middle school cohort. So.
And Jenny this year has had the professional choir. You've had one of the students have gone out and done a bunch of professional performances.
Yeah, we were the first who gives your show choir, so that put us on the map.
Yeah.
Don't think people think of show choir, so they get their career up short. The founder of the organization is actually um from New England and felt very strongly about bringing it, so.
And we did a parade, a private party to the water, just kind of nice. We're excited about it, excited for it.
Can I go? I move the state board education accept and approve the Lincoln School of the Arts' request to add grades six and seven and eight for the remaining term of their existing approval.
Second. All right, call up there.
Hi.
Hi, thank you very much. Nice to see you and thanks, Stacey.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, it's a pleasure.
Thank you, Stacey.
Nice to see you.
Sorry, sorry to drive us long for minutes. No.
It's nice to see your head going on. Actually, I know John Pult very well, he's a great pastor.
Thank you so much. Thanks, Stacey. Thank you.
Thank you.
Same down, too.
Thank you. Okay, non-public school renewals. All right. It's just a a list of renewals. They all need the uh qualifications.
Do you have a list?
Oh.
Well, how many?
So, yeah, so we have we have twenty uh non-public schools renewing. These are, we have twenty-seven initially this year. One school opted not to renew, uh six were approved that year last week. So, these are the remaining twenty, so everybody's done. It's different than prior years, I added that up. So, that feels good.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Um, there's seventeen uh approved attendance approvals and three attendance and program approvals. And everybody's getting in by the deadline this year? Yes. Wow. Yeah, we've uh talking with Director Davis, we made a real strong push with our language and our initial emails. Good. So, yes.
Awesome. Well done.
Yeah.
I move the state board accept and approve the following schools for continued attendance approval status for the period of July first two thousand twenty-four through June thirtieth two thousand twenty-nine as a slate.
Second. Call up there. Hi. Now, that was just the approval attendance and you got that.
Yes, I move the state board accept and approve the following schools for continued attendance and program approval status for the period of July first two thousand twenty-four through June thirtieth two thousand twenty-nine. Portman Christian Academy, Saint Catherine of Siena School, and Saint Mary Academy.
Okay, second, second, rush, call up there.
So, for what maybe this education, um what's relevant about this is the approval for um attendance only. On the first list, that is the one jurisdiction we have over in schools, is is to um ensure that they're meeting their attendance requirements.
Oh, so we have, uh, the way the state statute works, non-public schools uh have to be approved by the state board of education to be certified and and be classified as schools and do their thing. But there's a potential misunderstanding because the we don't approve the curriculum. Where it's just a check box, checkbox in the law. Do you have a proper building? Does it need fire code? Do you have proper staff? You know, that kind of thing. So, we're approving that they've met the legal requirements to be a school, but we're not approving their program at all. And so, some schools would put, you know, approved by the state board of ed and not explain that. And so, a parent might think, not that they were had ill intent, they were approved by the state board of ed, but a parent might assume that we approved the whole curriculum and the program. There's a separate category in which we approve the curriculum and program. So, we separate those out now, just to make clear that if some that are approved and they then they are not allowed to advertise that they approved their program, they attended, so that's where that goes.
So, do you call them by two different names or just, so you don't?
Uh, no, they're they're separate from public schools, but um in in the sort of rules that we've set, they're um A A, which is approved for attendance, and A P, which is approved program. So, the ones that haven't approved program do get to advertise. Hey, the state has certified our program and has approved our program, and so we have a a thumbs up from the state for that.
Okay. That's right.
But ones that we haven't approved the program can only say that they were approved for attendance, not for a program. Because it's just a, we want to make sure that no parent is mistakenly believing that we've approved a program we didn't approve.
Yeah, the so all the schools, if the intentions meet the compulsory uh attendance requirement of the law, and then the programs, the ones that are approved as A P, all have been accredited by an accredited agency, which is approved by this board. So, that's how that approval kind of flows.
Okay. Great, thank you.
And Jim, this is the first set of approvals we've had since you've come on too, right?
None from public?
No, I think we said.
See, I think we did.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I included you in the conversation.
It was smaller. No, 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 I I love the the recap. We we did one batch, um, at least.
Yeah.
Alrighty. Room making.
Hello, Ben.
Hello.
Um, I'm not sure if anyone from health is here, um, if I mean, I don't know if you want to come up.
Sure.
The first uh the first proposal we have is for school health services. Um, these are um required minimum policies for schools for health services. Um, they are going to be expiring in July, so um they're being brought forward now. Um, there aren't too too many changes to them, but there were a few that I outlined. Um, and um, if she, um, sorry.
I'm Catherine, plus I.
And sorry. Explain the the rules in terms of what they
So, I I don't believe there's um significant changes. Some were just aligning with updated R S As. Um, uh, like the one around, are we doing all all?
Yeah, there's three sections here, so.
We refer. Okay. Um, that's uh school nurses, um, was for mostly clarification purposes. Um, and outside of that, um, it's mostly just for working law.
The big the big change is that um they are repealing the last section, which is the physical examination of students. There is statute that says they're required to have that physical examination prior to going to school. But these rules um say that they have to have physical examination every year. Um, and the local board can decide to that with their own policies if they decide to, but um the program didn't deal with necessarily having in hospitals.
So, students now have to have exam every year before they enter school?
So, there it's, there's already statute um on the books, um, that's not sure if it's new, but it is um, it would be completely essentially, um, since there's already a statute there about the physical examination. Um, as it states in the current rules, they do need a physical examination unless they they get an exemption. The statute, I believe, does not require um the annual physical examination, but it does require a non-record. How's that work?
Yeah, what what would the what would the record reflect if they don't have a physical?
Well, they just pull it out from my system and they can see it. Um. Um, but it's, can I grab my logo real quick?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, Julie, would it be fair to put it this way, that the statute says a physical and the rules say an annual physical?
Yeah, so in the statute, I believe, it says before they enter school, so before they enter kindergarten, they have to have that physical examination showing they have all of that. Um, they have to have immunization records as um required by statute. Um, the rules right now say they need to have documentation that they've had a physical within the past year. And if they have it, they have to show that they have an appointment scheduled for that physical examination. Um, and then they can have conditional enrollment, and conditional enrollment is um described in the public health um statute as far as what that looks like.
And this is separate from the immunization requirement?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think that's the important thing, is that the immunization requirement is totally separate from the physical requirement. And so, the question becomes, why are we making them get a physical every year before school when we're that doesn't cover the immunizations, which they're required to get. It's a it's a separate thing. So, what are we, from a health point of view, from like a public health point of view, like we're not we're placing the parent's judgment of, you know, when to get a physical. From a public health point of view, what's the benefit of having that annual physical?
If they play sports, I think they're you, I mean, you know, they're gonna have their
But if they're not, we were saying everything has to have an annual physical, so what?
Right.
The the one consideration might be that um uh some immunizations don't have the, you know, you don't get immunized every year. And so, uh, but physically you would have the annual, and so you have those immunization records, but not having an annual physical um from a public health point of view. You know, it's a
Other than the immunization, like other than the chemical disease, there's not really a much of a prevention thing going on.
So, if a parent says they don't wanna get their kid an annual physical, they're gonna do it every two years, that's a problem having them in the public school system?
They can get, they can do an introduction and I believe updated RSA. Um, states, it's not religious as much as that. They just need a written, a written thing.
So, it's not really a requirement. So, I mean, it can be a an issue with um you know, it comes down to the last couple of weeks before school starts and you let it slip and then you can't go to school. That's that happens.
It's just interesting to me that apparently my kids had to have physicals every year before school started and it all went by in such a blur that I don't even remember.
Yeah, how I remember we did.
Not necessary.
Yeah. That's why you see so many.
You're still doing it.
Yeah, well, that's why, I think that's one reason why it's um, it can be challenging to get a pediatric practice appointment in the summer, like July and August, because there's lots of parents like, oh, I gotta get that.
I I just think it's well-intentioned, but what's the purpose of a rule that isn't a rule? I mean, I hate to say.
That's a statute.
Well-intentioned, but. But my other concern is um going beyond the legislative intent, right? So, the legislature intended to have that entry into public school, first entry, and then the board saying, we're gonna both go beyond that and require annual. And uh, if they wanted to do that, they could have.
And school nurse performance?
Cause I don't, because it's not a fine, unfortunately.
So, the rule right now says, um, the current rule says if an examination has not been performed within the past year, the school shall accept documentation of an appointment for a physical examination with a licensed physician, advanced registered nurse practitioner, or physician's assistant. So, a muscle school nurse was one of those things. I don't think the school needs to be able to do it. But um, yeah, the documentation has to be from one of those
So, you can get in if you have a point, show. Okay, we don't have it yet, but we're gonna get it in the next month or so.
No.
All right, so that's one of the changes.
That's that's the big one is is removing that. Um, the other one being that we were just aligning with um federal statute in the first section um regarding um immunization records. Because there's federal um federal law that says um um Vito McKinney, um talking about if a child is experiencing homelessness, um they are not required to um present reference immunization records. So, we just added that to the rule so that it'll reflect that particular um mandate.
Alrighty, so are we going to approve this one at a time, or do you not?
Well, no, it's one
It's it's one
It's one initial proposal. And it's just the initial proposal, so it'll go forward and have a hearing on that.
Yep.
Um, oh, but you're just, you're talking about school health services, not school health services and procedures for drug-free. Um oh but you're just you're talking about school health services, not school health services and procedures for drug-free education?
No, that's separate, we're so right, okay, so it's alright, I know.
No, separate.
But isn't it we're looking to approve, so I just wanna know what the what the actual?
We are we are looking to uh approve the initial proposal for school health services.
And we're the if he's talking about his whole review, um we're approving the goals, but part of that involves repealing the section that requires the annual physical examination. Was that the question?
Yeah, that was the question.
So I motion that the state would approve the initial proposal for ED three eleven regarding school health services.
Okay, second half there.
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. Drug preschool zones.
Drug preschool zones, um what's that, just to make sure.
Okay. Thank you, nice to meet you.
This is another set of rules that is um set to expire in July. Um we did not make many changes except for um editorial. A few things that um were changed was the number of signs that are required. Um and there was a provision added that it's based on available funding. Um because at the moment, it says that the um department will provide these signs and that changes provide them um you know, if there's funding available. And um it's also changed so that it's any new schools that are owned or leased, so if they already have signs, they're not providing new signs. Um and it used to say how many signs, um or it was more signs and now we're saying has to be at least one. Um and the other one being um will provide a template so that these schools can manufacture those signs instead of providing those signs from the department.
Uh do we have any I doubt this states, but uh maybe there's been some academic research on when they're posting a sign that says this is a drug preschool zone reduces drug use in the school or drug sales in the school, um you know, okay.
I can certainly reach out and find out, but I don't.
Uh it'd be useful to to have, I mean I have no problem putting those signs up, but um whether they're actually effective, it's uh.
Right, there's a cost, but and also they are gonna be expensive and maybe this money's better spent elsewhere.
No, this, yeah.
Is it merely a field with measure?
Uh yeah.
Yes, so um.
Alright, so.
I move to approve the initial proposal for ED three sixteen regarding procedures to mark drug-free schools on the state.
Second.
Half there?
Right.
Alright.
Okay, now we have um a couple of final proposals. Um so the first one we have is for the CTE teacher and specialty credential. Um we again, based on there was some public comment, we did remove the piece regarding minor science in there. Um and then one of our ed consultants made some clarifying changes to some of the pieces. Um so for instance, um um I'm sorry, is that? So we added some some clarity involving um in the first section, um and this was new text from the initial proposal, but it wasn't quite clear the way it was ordered initially that um if they hold this endorsement, they can teach classes in a content area where they hold that endorsement, in schools that have a CTE center or not. But also in the feeder in feeder programs that start in twenty five. And the way it was ordered before, it 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 did it seems like it was saying you could teach in feeder programs in schools without CTE centers. So we switched it around to make it more clear as to what was meant. It's not an either or, it's all.
Yeah.
Um and then so for instance, I think, you know, there's a piece about um IEPs, um you know, the teacher being familiar with those. And we said, you know, specific to CTE environments, because if you're teaching in CTE, in those particular places, we're teaching automotive, you know, you're gonna wanna know specifically what type of um accommodations and requirements are required in that environment. And then we switched some things as far as the order in the last one, just to match up with all the rest of the um credentials. Because for some reason, um the piece that we usually have at the beginning of each of them was at the end on this one, so we just switched it so that it mirrors everything else. I don't know if any of you have any additional questions about some of the that you just there. Um and then again, we just um it was inconsistent where sometimes it spelled out pure and technical education and sometimes it was CTE, so we just fixed that across the board.
Uh motion to approve the final proposal for ED five oh seven dot zero two and ED five oh seven dot zero three relative to licensure requirements for seventeen year teachers.
Second.
Alright, half there?
Aye.
The next one is for elementary school teacher, ED five oh seven eleven. We re-adopted this without any changes because it was going to be expiring and this is kind of a big one. Um so we wanna make sure that the PSB has plenty of time to go through, meet with subcommittees to make the substantive changes. And so there really aren't any changes to the final proposal either, I think there was one editorial change from um OLS, but we're moving these through so that they have plenty of time to work on the actual changes when they're ready to bring them forward.
Uh motion to approve the final proposal for ED five oh seven dot one one relative to licensure requirements for elementary education teachers.
Second.
Half there?
Aye.
And then we have the school nurse and these were interim rules that we brought forward last year um with the legislative change regarding um nurses having to be working on their bachelor's degree to be a school nurse. Um so these are there's very little change to these, we brought the interim rules forward. I think we changed one item per OLS so that it says associates free or higher, um so that includes degrees higher than an associate's, but other than that, the text has not changed.
Uh I move to the state board education approve the final proposal for ED five oh four dot zero eight and ED five oh four dot two dot ten regarding school nurse licensure requirements.
Second.
Half there?
Aye.
And lastly, we have the adoption of the ED five eleven rules, which we um evoted on the conditional approval response earlier this morning. We did receive back from OLS this morning that the conditional approval response was accepted and therefore we are able to adopt these sections.
Uh motion to adopt ED five oh one, ED five ten dot zero five and ED five eleven relative to investigations and disciplinary proceedings.
Second.
Half there?
Aye.
Alright.
Alright.
Thanks.
Thank you, Julie.
Alright, um this was a fantastic piece. Great, so I have um exciting news, I'm very excited about it. We um were able to um at GNC, the um Con um uh Connego was passed. Um it was a pilot, the artificial intelligence uh form, and it actually was one of our we are the early adopter of this kind of education. I think it's going to have a profound effect on the education system. Um I was able to see a presentation from Connego at one of our CCSS's own um events and it's just amazing what the tool can do. I think the um pre- previously they had a free free medium, I think that that's what they called it. Um it was very basic, but we are gonna give um the di- the districts a unique um um you know version of Connego and it's pretty unique. And it provides free services for teachers and students and I just kinda wanna mention some of these. Um it turns AI from a content generator only to a Socratic tool to enhance uh teacher-student interactions and the efficacy of student learning. So some of them include a writing coach, which has immediate feedback for students and kids, which is really great because I think that's gonna make it really very accessible to kids. Um for teachers, it has the ability to customize the assignments for students and some of the groupings of students based on their specific learning needs. It has on-demand student support for like multi-link tool tutoring. And the pilot also offers enhanced services for educators such as custom professional um learning, for goal setting for teachers, school level reporting and stimulus rostering. And the access to the chat GPT four on the student board. So we're real I'm very like over the mood for this um took a little while to get it passed, but I'm very excited about it. Are you all familiar with Connego?
Um no, and and I will appreciate hearing more about it, but that's and my initial concern is, you know, where are the the controls?
Yeah, I think that um when when looking at the contract, there's lots of um security um security measures to make sure that data privacy is there. That kids are staying on topic, that they're not going outside of boundaries, a lot of those issues, um and they've worked all that out.
So now please do share what what is Connego?
It's so it's a it's an online tutoring tool, so you know, the demonstration that I saw that was really wonderful, it was um you know, it was a math problem. There was a math equation for a student that was struggling with homework and the child says, hey, here's what I am stuck on. And the 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 Connego um immediate feedback says, well, what did you try? So it's not just it's very interactive, so then the student says, well, I tried putting this line segment in there. And then Connego says, hey, that's a great approach, but did you try this? And then the student has to try that, so it's back and forth exchange um on materials, it's very.
Doesn't provide an answer.
Yeah, provide it doesn't provide an answer, so the kids are doing lots of thinking. And um I think that, you know, kids what they're interested in, they're gonna have um you know, a tutor to help them get better at what they have agency in. So.
Nice.
I'm very excited about that one, that's our first update, okay, we have more.
Yeah.
Um second, uh we also have I said we have our i-platform on the website, but this one we've we've expanded it and it's now called iFin- Finance. And what this means is we'll have our DO, the schools are required to fill out their DO twenty five, which is a financial document. And so now instead of just um higher level um finance reporting, people uh can get into um their green alert dating um finance data such as some of the things that they can look at, receipts, expenditures, balance sheets showing current assets and current liabilities. Um we've this report is used for federal and state reporting and it's most most notably calculating the average cost per pupil uh per people as well as our tax rating. Um so this is really a fantastic tool. I think one of the things about um uh what we're doing here in Hampshire is about transparency. And so now everybody has access to the same information, the parents, the voters, the taxpayers, the teachers, so that's another exciting tool.
S- so does districts, are they comp- how are you how do you compel them to use this? Is it is it mandated that they have to through this?
Well, no, it's 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 a platform that's up it's it's like a da- it's almost think of it as a data dashboard.
So what they submit then gets put through this.
Exactly, so the da- the data isn't static anymore, it's we're doing something with all the reports that they need to handle.
Excellent.
Yeah, so I'm I'm excited about that. And lastly, um we have our teacher of the year semi-finalists, we met many, many of the teachers. We had two hundred fifty one nominations this year, there were seventy six six applicants. We went over to um the National Guard and met all of these wonderful teachers. And we have it down to the selected fifteen folks and coming from all different places um around the state. We are some of the support members all go to go to the Edvies this year and celebrate teachers, so we are making sure the teachers are celebrating very fast.
Alright.
That was my entrance.
Excellent.
You're very welcome.
Okay, so wanna lunch break?
Um we have gavel up the public here.
Yeah. That's a good idea.
What are you doing that?
I was.
Sorry.
Uh alright, visual arts teacher, nobody showed up, anybody? Visual arts teacher, no?
Okay.
Gavel out the public area on that. Um so lunch is here, uh do you wanna
And lunch is here.
grab lunch and come back and have Julie do our um sort of where we are in the three oh sixes kind of discussion while we eat?
Yeah, we'll hurry it.
Yeah.
Time.
Yeah. Alright, that's.
I have some.
What? Yeah, that's. Do this.
And as far south as Na- as Nashua, and as far west in Swansea, and as far east as Merrimack.
Who was your job?
Next turn, right.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, we're we're the same.
Yeah, we have our uh next turn.
Yeah, twenty twenty two is then probably the district.
Yeah.
Well, must you read the the blurb that says we can serve three consecutive terms of five years apiece then then?
Well, we can serve three consecutive terms.
How long your terms?
Four. The state website still says five.
Uh-oh.
Yeah.
So we can do three, we can't just do two?
I would say.
We we could do we could do two in one, like the maximum
Or we need to like count them out?
No, no, we can. We can do twelve?
The maximum number of terms we can serve is three.
Is it on our book page?
Oh, should I?
It's been five since, I brought it up to
Can't.
IT people before, I don't know.
Oh, I'll fix it right now.
Oh. I mean, last time I checked, it still said five, but.
Mm-hmm. It was still says five. Why don't we add?
Uh on the executive um on the um on our information base for the board of it, it says we serve five year term.
Well, it it's about you have someone right here who can.
Well, you have to change.
Um it unless it's been changed, uh this on the DOE website, the state board of that page somewhere on there, it says we serve five year term.
It's what we said for you.
It's four.
It's four years, not five years? It's four years.
It's four, yeah, but it's it's said five forever, it's been up there for since before I got on the board, it's been.
They s- they can serve up to four, three, three, four year.
Three, four year terms.
Yeah.
Three, four year term?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hmm. So I I thought we were we are out, we're not necessarily out.
No, it could be.
Diana, are you fixing it?
One more, one more.
Yeah.
Four more years.
The championship eighteen, so three or two.
We're gonna have people change it for me.
Through our office, I didn't know that. I don't know, I don't have the information with the doctors.
Right, yeah, right, I'm gonna.
I'm gonna go see if I can find Johnson right, let's see.
Turn step down, it's on the phone call.
Get. Oh, okay. Alright.
He's gotta he's gotta apparently gotta work hard.
Okay.
So Ryan had to get off work because he moved the lead to like it's uh.
Right. Is your your district is?
It's been sh- it's been reshaped a bit too, so.
Are you so are you what are you?
I'm four.
You're four. Yeah, he's not, yeah, he's in season three, that you use it one?
So Ryan, he he wasn't five, he's cause he was national.
Right. closest furthest piece he could have moved would have been one part.
Well, he's still one of the biggest.
Yes.
Five's not it.
It's a great dog, it's a really great dog.
In the vision statement? In the vision.
It was running in front of my eye.
Yeah, I think he's running for um executive executive.
Ooh. That one.
Well, is did he fit already five year? I mean, I didn't see the news, I think five.
That one.
Hmm.
Oh. Maybe he was running, but.
But was there already five deadline?
That's a day tomorrow is finally.
Yeah, so.
Sure, I'm sure he's not gonna ask.
Well, that's.
He must have my number.
Yeah.
And um Victoria's already just.
But so it can it can be for a sentence.
Final final sentence.
Yeah.
Of those.
Mm-hmm.
Victoria's.
Who was who was the line?
Uh well, Carla Garrett's gonna be on the board, a great thing.
Four.
Success freestater.
Oh, okay.
And you only have to have six meetings a year.
When's the last meeting?
All all of them.
Okay. Okay.
It's fixed, it's your.
It's fixed.
Yeah, I haven't taken it yet, I haven't taken it away, so.
Would you oh. I did it twice and I changed it on a libertarian.
Here, yes. You got you, no, I got figured.
Sorry, I there is no way I can say.
I I figured, that's okay, you run with it, right, yeah, it was good timing for your for your boss, okay.
Timing is perfect.
So we're all back.
One is up, right?
And Julie, yeah.
So um we just have a a few outstanding items for discussion as well as some outstanding items from last time. I do have this was on canvas, but this is just a color copy. Um one of the things that um we haven't had a chance to work at yet. is the table. The table that lists out the graduation requirements. And so this document has um the changes that were proposed in the initial proposal. And then um on the right hand side, um, has the changes accepted from the initial and shows proposed changes based on um conversations that happened um with some other groups. Um, and so I don't know if they, if anyone has any um questions or discussion points on this, but this is what's currently.
So the the uh table work of right is the new one?
Yes, and so the big changes there, again, there was a lot of public um
Yeah.
public comment on the electives, because we went from six, which is in the draft proposal,
Yeah.
to two and a half.
Yeah.
And there was a lot of um people that had the two and a half is too little for open winters. Um, I think there was some, there was some discussion around, you know, if the student is on a C T E track and they, you know, they're not gonna have enough electives to to complete that track. Um, and so we've brought it back to four. And then um the math credit was brought back down to three, which is what it was previously. And then um we had initially added a credit of U S history and that was taken back out.
Why was that taken back out?
Well, it wasn't there to begin with and it was added and I think.
So which one was the?
Uh, I think U S history. I think because there were a lot of social studies credits there
Is this?
and it was discussed that history, government and constitutions of the U S in New Hampshire may encompass U S history.
Mm-hmm.
Didn't need to have another full credit. Um, I don't, I don't remember all of the discussion from this around that.
So this is what I anticipated. Um, the reason we put the full history credit in there is so kids would have to take a full year history and not be watered down with uh half, uh, a half credit, but one semester of U S history, 'cause that's all that we're applying to pick on now, basically. So, um, you know, history, government and constitutions of the U S is not a history course.
Hmm.
It's a, it it it's sort of, you get some civics, you get some history, you get uh New Hampshire stuff, so. You know, I think we might need more conversation around this, but
Mm-hmm.
um you agree, you know?
What? It seems redundant. I know it's not, but civics and then government and constitute is there there's more redundancy there than there is in the U S history course and then just history in terms of the volume.
So part of the problem is there's overlap in these things, right? So civics, depending on what you're teaching about civics or how you teach it, or how the course is built, uh, can certainly overlap with government and constitution of the U S.
Mm-hmm.
But it doesn't necessarily overlap, right? So you can have a whole separate civics course. You can have uh constitution, government of the U S in New Hampshire as a government course that teaches you the structure of the constitutions, the the structure of the United States government, how it works, why we have. And then a separate course on civics, which can be civic engagement, voting, right? A whole bunch of other stuff that's not government structure. So my concern is that the reason we work through some of these increases in this um what the art is. Is that we have kids that we mandated by law that they have to attend. We got you into it. And we tell them, and here's the public school that we're gonna create for you. You can go somewhere else, but this is the default. So you have to come here. What's the purpose of mandated attendance essence? I mean, I think that's that's the fundamental question. Why do we do it? Why do we have compulsory attendance? Why do we provide any of this stuff? There are two reasons. One is to teach this new generation, every every generation, you have barbarians that are born without any understanding of your culture. And you have to teach them about your culture, but to teach them about why your government exists, the way it does, your history, your uh structure of your society and civilization. You have to teach them that, otherwise they will not know. So we teach them, we require them to go to school so we can make them understand our government, our country, our state has these structures, these traditions. This is what we're gonna teach you is how to be a citizen, how to function as a vote, how to function as a citizen of the U S and of New Hampshire.
Right.
And if we don't make sure that they have enough learning to function, then we're not doing our job. And that's the number one point. The other foundation for public education is to have kids be financially self-sufficient. So part of it is civics, part of it is you need to be able to uh support yourself and have an occupation. And this goes back to the sixteen hundreds, I mean, these aren't the part of the original Massachusetts public education laws where so kids would not be entering their local communities. They could have a job and maybe can come and and contribute, both as citizens, but also support themselves.
And I just, um, sorry, don't don't mean to interrupt you, but I did just wanna um point out that
Sure, yes.
um, it is in statute as far as like certain requirements. It's laid out pretty heavily in statute, it um, it's one eighty nine eleven.
Yeah.
Um, but there it is now required, so uh dedicated class time for civics in each elementary group, which can integrate with other subjects. A half year course or the equivalent of a half year civics course in middle school, grade six, seven, eight. A half year course of instruction in civics in high school required for high school graduation. And a one year course of instruction in history, government and constitutions of the United States and New Hampshire in high school required for high school graduation. So that's kind of where um those two pieces came in there. Um, it's, you know, it's part of statute that they need those, they need a credit and a half of those things um for graduation, um, that kind of have to be in that.
I I throw up there that the requirement to have civics might be watered down a bit because it says civics and civility. Help me out with that.
Yeah, I don't, I.
I mean, I I I'm all for civics, um, history, civics, constitution, yeah.
How do you define?
But but civility, it sounds like we're watering it down a little bit.
Civility, where is the definition?
What is there, is there a reason for that that you know of? Because I think it's.
And that was a suggestion um from, I think that was feedback from some groups that we discussed.
I mean, I think civic, I. Civics is civics. I I I think civility is like essential component of civics, right? So, I mean, that's part of what our entire structure of government was built on, is bringing people together to solve problems by discussing and talking and debating, so that's part of it.
Especially today's, today's.
Yeah.
Especially today.
Yeah, especially today, it's important, but my question is, if we write it this way, give equal um, how do you devise a course with civics and civility? That's gonna imply that you have to have fifty fifty. Um, and I think civility is part of civics.
Civility is how you apply civics and how you how you make it. Civics is the structure and the and the and the guidelines, everything you spoke of earlier. Civility is what we need to do as a country and for students to learn to 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 mitigate not as 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 laziness, as acrimonious, as anger. You know, you need that, you need to have that civility, but it's not, it's not this or that.
It's oh, oh, but yeah, I I have a problem with calling it, I I have have credit in civics and civility because I feel like civility is part of civics, like you can't. When legislators get elected in New Hampshire, one of the trainings they get is in the rules of the House and the Senate. Rules are, a large chunk of the rules are how to be civil.
How to be.
How to, you you don't call other members by their first name, you don't like name calling, that that's the kind of stuff is an integral part of civics. And that ought to be part of any civic instruction, but I.
And again, the statute lays out exactly a lot of the items that do um need to be considered.
Yeah, so I don't know that we have to call it in civility.
I I this this was uh started, I mean, I'm back, I don't know if the goal there was a civic civility program, but
Mm-hmm.
in a month it started out there, so. Uh, and and the concept was that of course you need to learn s civ civics, but you also need to, how how do you deal with conflicts, you know, with with all, so that that was part of the the program on.
That should be part of every subject.
I think I'm I'm all for that. I just don't want it to be worded uh civics and civility so that maybe some instructor somewhere may misinterpret that. And fifty percent of every day is not talking about civics. They merely talk about how to be civil, which is nice, wonderful, but it's not the, it's not the, in my opinion, the purpose of that call.
And it's it's quite subjective.
It's very get, very subjective, you know, it's lower up to a lot of people.
And and is that curriculum? So when we define something like this, do we put in a curriculum on what kind of things need to be covered?
Yeah. No, we don't do curriculum at all.
No, no, but somebody's, but that's something, yeah, not us, of course, you know, uh.
We have. Somebody does, but that's not.
Can we just change that back to civics? You have that.
Yeah, that's all, yeah, all of this is up to us, yes.
Or. And but I'd I'd likely have that changed back to.
Yeah, I agree. I get what they're saying and I don't disagree on the importance of civility, I just don't think it was a title.
I I just don't wanna miss, these are someone who.
I I think it is, I don't know, it is a little bit, it it left opens to be different, obviously, but at least bringing up the the importance of civility in in the discourse.
I know.
Otherwise it would be just a civic course with the structure and people and things like that, you know.
I I I I put that in a category of when I worry about multiple terms in a title. For example, history, government, constitution of the U S in N H. I love all of those. I think all of those are important and should be taught robustly. But because you had all of those in there, i- is different instructors going to give eight percent to one topic and not the other? I mean, it's it's up to them.
But I think let's let's leave it to the instructors to deal with that, you know, otherwise.
As long as they get.
I thought, oh, otherwise are we gonna split the world history, global studies also, saying, you know, we can really call it by one?
No, I mean, that's been that's been there, that's just what I should.
I had, I know, all I'm saying is that it the, this was actually introduced very recently, just because of the nature of civility, you know, in in our education. So I I I know because I've been working with a friend, he planned the program on the on this civ- civics and civility, primarily to focus, bring both into the discussion.
So so we changed it in the initial proposal to have it go from a half credit to a full credit, world history, public studies, geography. That's cap. We propose going from uh going to a full credit of U S history and that is texted out. Interesting.
Um. Are these recommendations that we can?
We can do whatever we want, it's just feedback from the field.
Yeah.
You're gonna be sure, yeah.
Yeah, I I I think maybe a little bit more work out of this is necessary.
Yeah, I I think I'm not ready to do, 'cause what I wanna understand is, so the reason we went down, again, we're talking about we require students to attend public school or or a school of some kind, and we give them the public schools to attend until they're eighteen. They may not leave until they're eighteen. And right now, we tell them, you have to attend the school. It's so important to society that you can't leave. But for six full credits, we don't care what we take, knock yourself out, take anything. So we cut that down to two and a half electives and beefed up the requirements. So we make sure they're getting civics, history, world history, a little more math, a little more economics, to make sure they're aren't getting the stuff that they're really not getting based on surveys of high school students in age of right, that's, don't know, who are great student government, you can't tell, you know, don't know a lot of U S history, right? So we beef that up and then the field comes back and says, oh, no, we need those electives. And we need to pull back from, you know, some of these requirements. Now, I'm open to a discussion of what the pri- appropriate level of electives are, but still, we've got four credits of take anything you want. But by law, we're telling them they have to attend school, so if we're gonna be telling them they have to attend school, why are we then telling them, but we don't care what we take? And if you go to a school district that offers a big robust selection of electives, great. If you don't, well, you're stuck taking something you might not be interested in, but that also is not necessarily gonna advance you as a citizen.
No, but I I I I differ from that, because uh the the basic courses need to be offered, I understand. But the way the industry is going, where the times are going, you know, we need to give them opportunity to learn other things, like schools cannot even catch up, you know, today. So if we don't give them the freedom, uh, we are going back to the the old, the set cur curriculum, all different things, and, you know, we're only giving a freedom of two credits, so uh uh, but how do we even bring them?
All the agreement, all the creativity, as long as they know the basics.
Yeah, the basics plus enough space for them to explore, you know.
Freedom. No, totally in agreement. I just wanna make sure that they know the basics.
And I think that's what we're trying to get them to have, right? It it's.
Oh, but is it is it six or is it two or is it four?
And it's all. This this is the minimum.
And it's not, they can graduate with thirty credits. It's it doesn't.
It's correct. Well, but but that's the point, like, so again, we're telling kids, so the kids who are doing the minimum, the twenty, I'll put. Some kids are gonna take lots of whatever, they're gonna take lots of electives, some dis- districts are sending their own, the ones of twenty four. That happens, uh, but this is the minimum that we say. Um, and we've got you until you're eighteen, you need to know this stuff to graduate, to be a an adult, to be a good citizen, to be a productive member of society. Those are things you have to know. Um.
So.
I think it's a bit of a hard to to make those cuts.
Yeah.
I'm trying.
But I'm really concerned that kids are 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 graduating with such a, and this is one reason we bumped up world history as well as U S history, 'cause their kids are graduating with a very poor understanding.
So I, how if I look at the histories, the logic, the and put that credit um of math equals, and then I'm looking, we have four credits in in English. How much overlap is there in English and all these other subjects where there's an extraordinary amount of reading that has to happen? Maybe four credits in English is too heavy. Maybe that one of those credits or half of those credits should be redistributed to the histories, the civ, where there is
Yeah. Sure.
an extraordinary amount of comprehension and reading that is is, I don't I don't know why, why is.
Right, so I mean, you're gonna open up a full, you change English, that's gonna be a big, uh.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, but. Yeah, but but why has enough on the topic?
But I think, but it's worth conversation, it's worth a conversation, right? If if you're, like, how much are you getting, again, as a society, right, so.
You're gonna make me read Moby Dick, but I don't need to know the history of.
Oh, it's.
No one's recording.
Yeah, I, yeah. Um, no, that's that's a fair question, I mean.
What's the process to really like this to?
So if you look.
No, we have, we have a little, I mean, there's no, there's no rush. We have a little bit of time before we have to move to, I mean, we don't want it forever.
Think this is a problem.
So we don't have to make decisions on these today by any means.
So math and science put together is all put together is five credits and English alone is four credits.
Yeah. That's a great point, but that's a great.
It's I I.
And and today, I I can't understand this.
Yeah.
You know, and uh.
Thank.
I mean, you have to be, it it, or why isn't there technical, technical reading and writing, it's that's that's more critical.
Technical business, there's a source.
I don't think for.
Well, English is supposed to cover that, you know, reading and writing, but um, you know, that's where you got.
Does it spell out, you better learn how to.
Well, that's where you get your essay writing.
Work, write a manual and understand a manual and.
No, but I, right, so this is why I wanted to have this conversation, because I think these, you know,
Yeah.
we we wrote in here, 'cause this wasn't required, we put in there, and thankfully, they read, we got no pushback without um having a half credit in statistics made analysis. Was not, was not required before, it's not required right now. Um, I think it's super important that they, you know, this kind of stuff, is you got some districts that, you know, aren't making this take it. And then they graduate with no, that they, you know, they understand the basics of statistics.
But one other point is, you know, the world is going towards project-based learning.
Yeah.
So that you get application-based learning, uh, so understand the context of the content that we're learning. Uh, but all these twenty credits, if you look at other than maybe some of the physical sciences or something,
Mm-hmm.
everything else is just theoretical, right? Book, good, classroom, whiteboard learning, but there is no app- application part of it at all, you know, and
Yeah.
So, because I go each, that's.
This doesn't determine how they teach it.
Right.
Oh, each school, each school out there can do project-based or do.
No.
You can certainly, I mean, I, there's there are schools now that are project-based and they should just.
Like. Yeah. There's a, there's a ton right now, um, I just had, meaning the school or testing, they were all.
Okay, okay, then go.
You know, how you teach. You know, how you teaches, you know, as long as you get to this result, but.
But, yeah, my point is that I I we need to give them enough room for other subjects which are more current and relevant.
Hmm.
You know, technology, business, finance, just, you know, but there's about a whole bunch of other things that may or may not fit into the, this primarily is a nineteenth century model.
It is, and that's probably.
You know, and we are still holding on to it, we, even though the world has changed, you know.
I saw, I'm I'm with you entirely, and that's why, you know, I think it's more of a bigger discussion, so it it just
It's the new, it's the new.
just to set this, right? These changes we made, but when we did our whole multi-year process and we came up with all the input, it was exactly, it was left the same.
Okay.
So there's this sort of default acceptance of this old model, and so I put in a lot of these changes in the discussion with, you know, some folks in our group and just say, hey, can we bump up the rigor here and make sure the kids really know what we want them to know, but you you make a great point about tech and business, so, you know, one of the things I would love to see is an entrepreneur, you have to get a half credit in entrepreneurship, like, just to understand, but not that we're gonna try to make everybody be an entrepreneur, but you have to understand how businesses work, what the lifecycle will start off, how, you know, that basic kind of stuff just helps you understand the world we live in.
I think.
Um.
Were there some subjects that you mentioned before, I don't see them here, the ones that you said were added, that don't go through the.
There's, and as you said. What's that?
If you look on the left-hand side, you can see like what was added, which mean.
So.
What are those?
So they're pretty much, yeah, the left side is what we came up with in February.
And a lot of it is required by statute, like the financial literacy, that's now required by statute, the civics, the history, the government, um, those are all, so, you know,
Yeah. Digital literacy. Yeah.
these haven't been updated in a bit, and there have been a lot of new statutes that have come up in the last couple of years that have added these requirements, so it was kind of all of a sudden, you know, we have to have these in.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, you know, there's that as well, but um, you know, if we do have some time to kind of um, you know, to have a further discussion on this and, you know, think about how we wanna move forward with this, but I would say, um, for now, if you wanna continue to make through the rest of the list, we can drop back to this.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is worth a bigger discussion, and I also would like to hear um
Yeah.
from CTE folks about how, what do they actually need for electives, because, you know, that's definitely concerning, a lot of children have a talent to make sure kids can, or not derail the kids, but at the same time, making sure you get enough history, you get enough civics, you get enough tech.
Is there any other partnership in CTE?
Uh, the yes, yes, see, it's not a requirement for higher standards here, but yeah, CTEs do require it in business, some of them, I mean, I don't know if everyone does, but that's.
Yes. No, but there's, yeah, there's a lot of different topics in CTE that we cover that could go to future.
Yeah, but you don't need to do a startup, but at least knowing the courses, and it's starting to change your mindset towards all these, again, this was my thesis, so he said.
Just only one. Sure, yeah, but I think that's, so, you know, and this is what you, to your point about the nineteenth century model, like, so this is, this is a uh, this is a nineteenth century college.
Yeah.
Right, so we're, you have to be, the the only thing missing is Latin and Greek, right?
Which is disturbing.
We, but but that's, but that's where the fun language is coming, right, so this is all, is a sort of, you know, how to be a well-rounded eighteenth-century gentleman, right? And then we've added stuff onto that, like digital literacy and a few other things, but it's still a same basic model, and there's a lot of strength to that model. But not if you're not getting enough of history, you're not getting enough of the skills you need to survive and function as a citizen, right, so, and I think you make a a, you know, interesting point about English. I mean, I loved the English classes, right, that was my, English was my favorite.
But there are electives, there are also multiple electives.
But but how much English do you need if you're if you're giving up, if if you're not getting, and then, you know,
But it it.
As a minimum.
some basics that'll give you skills to, you know, three math versus four English.
And again, this there's.
Wouldn't the math be more important in today's world?
There's a statutory requirement that students have to engage and apply with mathematics and English in all four years, um, and so that might be where that comes from, but it, you know, they mark it credits, but.
Correct.
Uh, but but it doesn't say equal doses, does it?
Well, so, so they have to, and this is, this is to that point, that may be where the four years of English comes from, but they're, they're both are required to engage within every year,
It just don't.
but we only require three credits in math, so the assumption is, the expectation in law is, you're not taking a math class for that fourth year, but you're engaging with mathematics in other classes, so the in the same way, I think.
Well, and again, the things like financial literacy, economics, there's math in those, and and we're.
Yeah, exactly. Well, there's math in physics, there's, so, so English would be the same way, so if, just for, just just picking out loud here, if there was three credits of English required,
Right, yeah. Oh, yeah.
you would still engage in English in your history class and your civics class, obviously, writing papers, your reading, like, so.
I did, there's a lot of, a lot of uh essays and 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 literature reading in some history classes from some students at home.
Oh, yeah, it's it's the core of.
But I mean, it's it's I mean, I'm thinking.
Alright, so, um, uh, yeah, let's let's just hold this for more discussion, um, I'll I'll try to speak up, we'll see.
Put it down.
Yeah.
At least it's a woman, what you brought up.
So if you have one year, you know, you were doing whatever, do we need, do we require, how many credits that could be accepted by a student?
Oh, I think they have to accept her.
They have, but how many did we say up to?
Oh, yeah, right, um.
If there's a point to it, so.
Yeah, no, no, it was more than that, uh, it was, yeah, it was some, I forget which one.
Well, it's thirteen.
Yeah, that was just something that we have. Their whole careers, okay, so we'll pin that, thank you, Julie, for doing that.
Yeah, um, so, um, we just have a couple of things that we didn't touch on last time, again, um, so on page seventy-one, there was a comment about clarity regarding, um,
Oh, you're.
Page seventy-one was the big old legal document, um, and they um didn't know, they said, is ethnicity then, when the word heritage is used?
Okay, that's.
If not, does a heritage follow your your culture or ethnicity, um, and, I mean, I don't know that the word is is even really necessary, given the other words that are also included, so, I mean, you know, do we take that or do we find another word, it's.
Um, I don't know, I have easy access to the main document, I don't have that, I have a good thing I should.
Well, you have.
So you can't find one, do you want one?
I think that.
I think I have.
I think I have.
You have, this one's not that.
No, but uh, can I pull it up on the.
Should be, can it's in the three of. So we'll save. So you can also have mine, I'm pretty familiar with it.
We don't have any marks.
Yes, I don't need them. It's in there.
Seventy-six?
Seventy-one.
Seventy-one.
No, heritage is very different than ethnicity, heritage is.
Yes. I love the lab, though, I mean, here in heritage.
I'm a side by side. I think one is one, is it a side by side, ethnicity is in my grandparents' part of Swedish and Italian, but by heritage. Yeah.
And a.
Seventy-one.
But it's something, but heritage comes from inherent, so your ethnicity, you inherit, so, there's a lot.
And one is one is a, your your traits, one is your traits and the others is your is your practices, I think they're, I think they're different, so.
Yeah, yeah, go. Okay. Uh, okay.
Yes, let's let's.
Well, um.
Well, you don't have to do anything to either, it's not necessarily a, you know, legal, but.
I think.
I think, so, I think heritage, oh, why don't we ask Mary Webster what they think about heritage, because I instinctively think of it as including culture, ethnicity, like, all the stuff that you inherit.
But but it's it's cultural and it's heritage.
Correct, but it's, but it's, I'm going to the next chair, we're gonna get a, we're gonna get a verdict.
They're, so, I almost think take out, take out cultural and legal heritage.
Yeah, let's see, let's see, we're we're going to, oh, well, see, something transmitted or acquired from a predecessor, ha ha, so that would include your culture, your ethnicity, your race, your anything you get, your you know, the the arbor was the place.
A mold is. Yes, the kind of mold or culture, and culture and race can go, it's just hetero.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It does like it, it's okay.
Right, I mean.
Yeah, let's just drop that, and that also, I see, those are flags, and and heritage is, I mean, is something that it's commutable, you can't, it's it's what you arrived with.
Yeah.
Um.
What page?
This is seventy-one.
Seventy-one.
I only have sixty-five pages.
Uh. No.
Well, cultural, by the way, should be culture, that's.
Right, that's right, forty, right. Yes.
I'm trying to.
I think you might have a mental.
It's gonna have to be culture, race, and heritage.
Um.
I think they drop cultural and race.
I'm a little hesitant.
Race, only because it's, unless it's just such a fraud.
We're here.
I know, but I can comment now.
We're here.
I don't like the phrase, like.
No, I think first we're drawing attention and making the issue.
Just doesn't.
But it is an issue, like, our our history.
It's a it's a philosophy.
About heritage.
It is, it could could follow your heritage, for sure. Um.
Why do you have, but why do you have idol, I mean, that, 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 that's all.
What's that? Why do we have what?
Occasional cross-differences of perspective and philosophy and heritage.
Oh, see, I think you need, I think you need the other stuff, I mean, we, I I think you're gonna need to set a marker for kids to say, look, people look differently than you, they have, uh, I mean, and and if we're understanding, so this could be part of the historical discussion too, right, understanding the process of civility engagement, great examples would be our history of race conflict, right, to s to use those examples to decide how not to do things and how things are proved, um, I I I would be tempted to take that out, because I just think that's.
Alright, then switch cultural to culture and leave heritage.
I just, I just have a, you know, kind of being redundant, that's all.
Yeah.
I I get that, I get that we should say something, but the idea is, um, differences within culture, race, and heritage, all are of perspective and philosophy.
Right, necessarily, so, um, so philosophy can.
No.
I mean, if there's a difference in areas, you have different perspectives, perhaps.
Right, but but what else is there?
But constant, the perspective and philosophy could change, but you're compared to the.
It's it, exactly.
Right, and you're right, the culture you is 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 a, is is not immutable, it's something, it's, it can cha, it it, you just, you can change it at any moment, this is.
Right, your philosophy, your beliefs you can change, but like you said, you can't change your race, you can't change your heritage.
But your heritage is.
Forcing differences, um, but my my point was, if there's differences in race, culture, or heritage, the differences come about in perspective or philosophy, if there are differences, although there are, but I mean, that's that's.
Well, so, well, so this is, I think, it's just helping, no, I get, I get what you're saying, I think we're trying to deal with, um, the reality of people and their perceptions, right, so we do have a history of conflict based on ethnicity, based on race, and and assumptions about one, right, so.
Why do we, why do we, why do we even have the word difference in there, why isn't it just tolerance and well-mannered engagement across perspectives, philosophy, culture, race, and heritage?
Across. Well, I, because, because that's, because that's the whole point, right, if if we all got, if we all agreed, or we all looked the same, uh, then we wouldn't have
Why does it have to be differences?
to be trained or or learn how to engage with people, so this is saying, a part of civics is understanding how to engage with people who are different than you are. Um, and I think that's a real core, important part of civics, and this just lists some of the ways in which.
How about, how about to use the net, the word different than you are, period.
That's what I said.
Yeah, but civics is what we're doing, and I'm sorry to interrupt, what we're doing is we're emphasizing that there are differences in race, culture, heritage, and I know there are differences, I get that, but I get that, but you why not differences in eighty-two other things that we can list, the idea is, you want to have people work on their differences and perspectives, and and in a great way, and you get that.
Of course.
I I I think the current, the the discussion is, should we include heritage and, you know, do we want to make larger changes, or just maybe leave heritage in there or not, so, questions?
Yeah. Okay, so, yeah, I mean, that was the, that's the start of.
Uh, I I, so, they should make it into a larger question, you know.
So, I I I I personally, I think just the reason, I think heritage includes ethnicity, I just think, but ethnicity does, so, I I don't feel that.
Yeah, and it's it's a better word than race and culture, you know, heritage already is inclusive of.
Yeah. Is lose all that stuff, but you know what's gonna happen, if we take race and culture out and leave heritage with the stated purpose of saying heritage includes race and culture,
Yeah.
we would get attacked for allowing racism to, for opening border racism, that's a hundred percent that's what gonna happen, if we take race out, we would get attacked for.
Oh, okay, okay.
How about, uh.
Then then you also read there, including.
Including in including tolerance and well-mannered engagement across all differences, perspectives, and philosophies, period, and why why are we trying to, and it's so many, like, where can be found?
So, um. I'm I'm going to be, um, having a meeting with all of us in a couple of weeks to kind of go over things, and again, this is a competence unclear, so this is one where, you know,
Sure.
we can have a discussion with them and say, hey, this is the discussion we had, they may say, okay, that that's fine, we might not have to change, we might not have to make any changes at all.
But we need to change cultural to culture.
Yes, I guess.
I I, I I think we keep heritage, I don't think it needs to, I think ethnicity is a subset of heritage, so, I think it's a comparison, um, yeah. I mean, it is a great discussion to say, hey, culture, race, they follow their heritage, so, I don't know, but I'm I'm okay with that, so.
I think you may have spent more time on one word rather than the other.
We won't, we won't suggest you Kate.
No, no, I think, Jen, you make a great point, but some of this is the perception of how it's gonna be perceived, and we all, we know what happens when we took mastery out to make it stronger, we get induced of weakening the stand, of people don't pay attention.
Hmm.
Alright, moving on, we're on competence, you know, page seventy-two.
Alright.
Uh, so, um, the last item there that you didn't touch upon, um, is there were some comments in the last section, um, I haven't listed his, he was his, very, but I don't think it's a section, but, um, I think it's been reworded, but it's the last section in the proposal currently, um, it's the delay in full compliance, there were some questions.
Page, page.
Oh, um, I I gave it to you, um.
Oh, here, here.
Um, we're gonna skip eighty-four. Eighty-four and eighty-five, so the last two pages of the document, um. And, um, you know, the first comment was pointing to a citation, which once we looked up that citation and found the correct one, um, the citation was actually one that had been, um, um, in clear conflict with the state's duty to provide a constitutionally adequate education, um, in the law, but there was a case where that was determined. So he said, well, I don't know that we're gonna want a a rule based on that law, um, you know, with the delay in full compliance, um, and I don't think in history that this rule has ever actually been used, um, because we have an alternative approval, um, method, and they can always ask for a waiver, and so, you know, based upon that, and then, you know, the comments based on, um, the criteria for granting a delayed full compliance, um, we thought, um, it may make sense to just get rid of the section, because it's not something that we've used, and, um.
Yes. That makes sense, I think, yeah.
Yeah. So that, so that's that.
Yeah, so we just, next this, I mean, I, that makes me a little nervous anyway, like, giving them the okay when they're not full compliance.
So, so that's, that was the new stuff, um, and then, um, now we're back to a couple of the open items from last time, um, we've listed out, so again, we discussed mastery versus proficiency,
Mm-hmm.
um, and what those words mean and how they're used in the proposal, so I don't know if anyone's thought about this.
Cause I I have some thoughts on that.
Well, before you do, Rush, can I just throw in something, 'cause Rush wants to talk about this, and I just wanna throw in this, may, it may be context for you, um, in one of our applications we had, uh, it it was, maybe five, I think, one of our.
Oh, one of them.
Yeah, um, but it may have been wrong, but any of, the one of the reviewers said repeatedly throughout the review, and I wonder if this is the practice in the field, or this is part of the user behavior decision, one of the reviewers repeatedly said, mastery means achieving eighty percent of competency or eighty percent proficiency, I have to go back and see what's where it is, um, and you remember that, it was in there, and
Yeah.
so that, I think, could be a, if that's actual practice in the field, that mastery mean, and I kind of think that's what we were getting from our class norm, is that, yeah, mastery means you meet eighty percent of your expectations, which is it's more like, we're like, okay, is that really mastery? Uh.
So, why why does it?
So, so that colors how that I I'll go back and look up.
Do do you know, beyond that definition, do is there an industry or educational definition of mastery? Because I.
That's kind of what we're trying to get at.
That term is huge to me, because years ago, that was a major linchpin in months in schools every day, using the term mastery, or probably on both sides, but what is it defined as?
Well, so so here, what we're getting is a proposed definition that mastery means achieving at least eighty five percent of competency.
In the current rules, I can tell you that mastery means a high level of demonstrated proficiency with regard to competence.
So, so if you have.
That's how we quantify it though, and and eighty five percent of being seventy could be an airline pilot, you're gonna have fifteen percent that you're not that good at.
Sorry.
Oh, so, you know, but the thing is, uh, I was thinking about it earlier, uh, the word proficiency has already been defined in a way that we talk about,
So, go ahead, Rush.
you know, proficiency levels in schools today, you know, we talk about such a percentage and thing. So the the concept of proficiency is that enough to understand the subject.
Mm-hmm.
That is how we test for proficiency today.
Right.
Okay, so proficiency, I believe, is that the lower watermark for establishing certain knowledge. So, I I I just wanted to separate the mastery and proficiency.
But that's. And mastery should be way, way.
But mastery should be way higher, yeah, but a- again, there is it is hard to quantify that. So, if you got hundred percent of everything, A plus plus, okay, A plus, that is, you know, whatever you say for A is your mastery, A and up is your mastery.
Ninety, ninety percent.
Whatever the place setting, you know, we can't we can't say ninety percent, because none of it is quantitative. If it's a math, I can understand, but if it's a written exam, it is a.
For most classes, you do quantify, and you.
Okay, they're fine.
Quantify, and you can say mastery is, I mean, someone gets an A versus B or C, or I I know I'm using, well, aren't you have a you know, straight A is your your mastering.
Yeah, that's all, so, uh, if you say that A is a mastery, then that could be a very aspirational thing to do, say, because the but proficiency, since we have already used that word for minimum knowledge, we should not confuse that with mastery anymore. So, let's not even, uh, that is you what you need to pass, mastery is what you aspire for. Okay, and mastery is.
Unless unless you have a different set of guidelines, which I know several schools have done, where mastery is the level to move on to the next level, as opposed to proficiency, as you said, so I mean, you you have different.
Yeah, yeah, then we can let's define it, yeah.
Yeah, no, no, I like I like your definition, because the whole idea is to use one is verbatim defining mastery. I that's a topic near and dear, because I I got denied a pool on several things ten fifteen years ago, because my parents didn't like mastery. My dog had pursued a learning mastery, so.
He hasn't taught you much, yes, exactly.
Yeah, I I I I think I I did, I looked it up, and this this will finally be approved with the term mastery.
No, so if if you say eighty five percent or whatever the that number, I again, that doesn't be a number pulled from Kina.
I know, I know, it's a little, I believe eighty five percent, I would go like nine years in.
No, so.
Yeah, but if we're making skin, so this is where we're gonna do this about discussion.
Either way we go, we have issues, so you say, you have to master the subject to move on. And we really are raising that bar, so if you can't pass a subject with a seven, then
that's great, but we're gonna have a whole lot of kids failing, right?
I'm I'm actually not saying that, I was just clarifying his definitions of proficiency.
Okay. Okay.
That that proficiency is enough to maybe pass, you can pass, but mastery or whatever you want to link mastery to, I wanna look at a certain thing, do I wanna link that?
Proficiency.
But what they're, what what the the response from the field was, hey, don't mess with the term mastery, meaning that you have to master competencies. If you say you have to be proficient at competencies, then you're watering it down.
Yeah.
And now we're being told, well, mastery does, it just means getting eighty five percent or eighty percent of the competence, because it.
I I.
Equal it to a a grade award or what is the mastery? What will they define as a grade eight?
No, I agree with what they're saying, I just think that if you have two different terms, they should be separated, they should be better defined, I think.
The.
Eighty five percent is not.
It is so, i- mastery, see, we we want to make sure that they're clear of proficiency, so there is a clear waterline there, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Mastery is aspirational. Am I right? In the in the wording, who actually set us, yeah, we want to, we want our students to be.
To to.
With the functional.
That's not it's it's fair.
That's the stereotype.
It's it's the expectation.
Yeah, then then it becomes a part, uh, uh, no, passing mark, okay, then mastery becomes a passing mark, and as you said, nobody will, I would not have cleared my high school, okay, so.
Me either, yeah, that's what that's what I'm trying to.
Yeah, so, uh, what? So, if to clear the high school, you need to have proficiency, to what we want to aspire for mastery, you know, and what is what is mastery?
Well, I I I'm just speaking from a parents, because I know that we drafted charters for certain schools that use the word mastery to move on from grade level to grade level, to our subject matter to subject matter. And that mastery was defined differently.
We need to keep right in our faces, that these are the minimum standards.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so to move on with the minimum standards, you would hope that they would be a percentage of proficient. So what's the percentage of proficiency required to move on?
So, so this thing is, gets circular after all. Because I I so I found that, and this is the World Ad- uh, World Academy application, one of the reviewers said, the expectation for mastery is eighty percent proficiency.
That that to me is backwards.
Right?
Yeah.
So, is, so achieving.
That's backwards. To master something, proficiency should be eighty percent of mastering it and being the best of the best of the best.
So that's why we're.
Then you have that, it's a hundred percent mastery, what?
Mastery should be a hundred percent.
If we're using, but this is where it gets circular, right? So proficiency is what? And this is again, why we linked to proficient in the first place, because we know that kids aren't being promoted on mastery, they're being promoted on proficiency.
Right.
And now we're being told, well, you have to define mastery as a percentage of proficiency.
No.
And that's what is, that's what they do now, though, that's what they do now. So, that's not, uh, it's not necessarily a pres- a percentage of proficiency, but, um.
It is higher than proficiency.
Uh, no, no, not not as that as they want us to write it in rule, mastery is achieving a certain percentage of proficiency.
Exactly, that's fact.
It's a high level of demonstration.
Perfect, if you're proficient in something, to your point, Rush, if you're proficient in something you can be like, you're good at, you're okay at, you've hit a proficiency, but to be master of your black belt.
I I disagree, I I disagree.
Yeah, so it's like, somehow we, are is it in our authority, our power, it's like.
Yeah.
But but you, unfortunately, we have already defined proficiency by talking about proficiency of school.
I'm okay with proficiency, I'm actually talking about mastery.
No, I'm just saying proficiency, so so these are two different things, because they're defining proficiency as something higher than enough to pass a class. You know, when you say the kids have seventy percent proficiency, this is, what do you mean, only seventy percent of the kids will pass that exam?
I think what they're doing. Maybe inadvertently what they're doing is twisting some terms so they can say, eighty five percent, look at all the mastery we have. And I I I wanna make sure that would be.
That's right.
So the industry, from the feedback we got, it's an industry standard to say, kids master the competencies on their way to achieving proficiency. So if you think about it in that progress, right? That's different than the way it's thought of in the outside world, right? Is that the black belt, right? So you're you're making your you're achieving proficiency until you reach mastery. The other way around is what the feedback we're getting.
Mastering individual topics in order for them to have the full competency that they're proficient in, and then they.
Achieve. Exactly, exactly, so.
So, master and mastery are this are are.
I know, mastery of competencies, right?
Right, but but they're different, to master something is not mastery.
Uh, so so you know. Well, again, we're being asked to use terms that are apparently very common in the industry, which is you master the the competencies, and then once you've shown that you master this certain collection of competencies, that achieves proficiency, so.
Let me let me let me throw something out, because what we're saying is, if we have to, we would like to use the terms in the parlance that's out there now. What is the term today for what I call a black belt, hundred percent? If mastery is not the in the common parlance of education, to mean you're acing it, you're crushing it, you're doing fantastic, you are the best of the best, you've done everything you can, and you're moving on to the next level. If it is not that, the term is not that.
Well, so again, it's circular, right?
Sorry.
So you're gonna master each individual competency.
Right.
And when you've collected enough mastered competencies to achieve eighty percent of proficiency, then you move on, and then, so that's, it's mastery.
We'll wait for your definition, though, to master those competencies, you only made eighty five percent of those competencies.
Again, it's circular, so this is where, this is the problem we have.
Right, that's that's why.
So every time we try to define it, and and what they also want, by the way, is not a percentage. They want the local districts to decide on their own what where that cutoff is. So if we said in mastery is eighty five percent, they're gonna get mad and say, no, districts need to decide what percentage.
That's right, okay, so, I think my my issue today is that when we talk about, uh, this school of that of this class has eighty percent proficiency, we have already defined what proficiency, so now we're defining it as something higher. So we should not touch the word proficiency, because it's already been used in in a way to define what is new.
What is the definition of proficiency, just to clarify?
When 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 I hear for this this.
In these rules is proficiency means the minimum student performance required to satisfy achieving the competency.
Yes, that's correct.
Exactly, that's it.
Okay, I'm good with that.
That is a passing grade, that's a passing grade.
That's what I think, I'm I'm good with that, it's sort of mastery term that I'm squashing out.
Yeah, so, then.
Right now it's not in these rules, I was taking it, so.
Yeah. So, so, so we should.
Why not? Mastery is second, you know, proficiency.
Yeah, mastery, no, yeah, mastery, proficiency wasn't in rules as they are currently, like, in our rules.
Yeah, right, yeah. Yeah.
Mastery was, now we flipped it, so proficiency is defined and mastery is not defined.
So proficiency is the bottom line, we that needed to clear to to pass an exam. So so let's not even say eighty percent of proficiency, because then that doesn't make any sense, okay? So proficiency is already taken, so let's not even use that word. Uh, mastery is, I think, uh, you you.
Joe, I just didn't remember, you know, my kids, we had to deal with grade point scales, and we went from an, we went from a ten to an eight.
Mm-hmm.
So, an A suddenly was very different than an A was the year before.
Right.
Um, when an A became a ninety five to a hundred, where it used to be a ninety to a hundred.
Yeah.
And Bs used to be whatever, that's more problematic to me, it it gives way less flexibility than an eight point grade scale compared to a ten. But that's, so so that that takes a, you don't have to define mastery and proficiency with with the scale, it defines itself.
So, so, uh, a way to think about it, um, the black belt analogy, uh, is useful, right? You have a lot of belts to get to your black belt.
Right.
So you're gonna have your white belt, and then your yellow one, you're gonna master the skills that, uh, that you need to get your white belt and your yellow belt and your orange belt on your way to black belt. So, you're not a karate master, but you've mastered the competencies you need to get that yellow belt, and then you move on, so so I think that's how they're.
But for mastering those belts is the appropriate definition of mastery, I mean.
Well, that's that con- that concept. Yeah, but that I think that's the way they're thinking about it, right? So, so at a certain grade level, you're gonna master the competencies needed to show that you can move on to the next grade level. That doesn't make you a black belt in math, but it means, okay, I've got the basics of geometry, I I can move on to, uh, you know, altitude. So, I think that's kind of, trying to sort of show you that, I think that's the way they're thinking of it, and we're thinking about it in, we're speaking differently, I remember.
Maybe use the word satisfy or something else besides master, because then it just, you're either satisfying requirements or you're lost.
Yeah, satisfy is closer to proficient than proficiency, and ma- I just, just words are words.
Proficient.
Well.
Proficiency is like satisfying, mastery is like you're black.
You guys, you know the politics of this, you know the politics of this. So, we take mastery out to try to achieve an actual real world, what they're actually doing now, definition of proficiency, and activists attack us for dummy dumb standards when we're trying to actually reflect on pla- practice as it exists now, so.
These are maybe, we don't need this, you know, we won't do that.
That's just, this is just the, we can, we can take it out if you want, just saying, that's that's how.
But you see, if something chaps the eighty five percent of proficiency is the definition of mastery, that just seems.
No, no, that that is.
That, I mean, yeah, you, that doesn't have to be there, that was just an example, so, okay, that's not in there right now.
Oh, okay, good, 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 yeah.
That just seems, that just seems, yeah.
But you'll notice the double standards too, if we set a very high bar for mastery, then we'll get attacked and taken away a little bit control.
No.
So, we're gonna get attacked in there, what we do, who knows will do what makes sense.
Yeah. Uh, so, you know, coming back to, uh, since I mentioned all the black belts and such, the the black belt is always what the teacher sees in the classroom, okay? So I think the mastery is something that is locally decided, I I don't think we can decide what's not what mastery is.
Right. Yeah, and and that's what I'm kind of getting at, is that I'm I think I'm willing to be flexible in the mastery thing because of that, right? Because, you know, part of this is, um, uh, trusting local districts and local teachers to say, yeah, you know, uh, that kid has mastered the subject, or mastered these competencies enough to be proficient, right?
I'm I'm okay with everything you just said, and I love local district control and support, and I I I love all of that, as long as, maybe as a guideline, everybody, districts, us, the state, the common sense people recognize that mastery is higher than proficiency.
But that I think is already defined, because proficiency is a minimum pass.
I I just, I mean, that just starts with competence.
But it's lower, it's lower, it's lower, mastery of competencies.
No, no. No, but that is the word, that's not what the, my definition of proficiency is already the minimum.
To get to proficiency.
Well, that you refer to mastery of a subject versus proficiency of a subject, mastery of a subject is higher than proficiency of a subject.
Yeah.
That that definition, that's that's.
Right, right.
They don't master the subject, they don't have the competency.
Two separate.
But they're not, that's exactly it, they're not mastering the subject, that's where we're getting thrown off, right?
Yeah.
We think in terms of mastering the subject, they're thinking in terms of mastering the individual competencies that accumulate to 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 get the credit or or the proficiency score, so.
Yeah.
So we're thinking at different levels, that's where we are, right? So they're thinking, master the, what you need to, master the skills, you need to get the white belt, and we're thinking, but you're not a black belt, yeah. So I think that's kind of.
But but each subject in the class is a black belt, is a white to a black, you know, from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, you're going through a five year.
We 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 might not get an answer.
Yeah, I.
Let's let's let's, uh, assess one of those philosophical things that.
No, but I think. My primary takeaway from this is that proficiency has already been defined in the hook, as the minimum required to pass.
Mm-hmm.
So we shall not, we should not confuse that with the with the on the mastery discussion, because.
But yes, so I think we're, I think we're talking into different things, right? So you have to achieve proficiency to get your credit or to move from for to complete the course, right?
Yeah.
Like get credit for the course, whether it's high school or whatever. So you have to get pro- you're proficient in that at the end of the course or learning opportunity. But how do you achieve proficiency? You master the competencies.
Me.
And that's, that's kind of how they are conceiving of it, and I guess I'm okay with that.
I don't think so. I think I'm, I think I'm living a nice tree of a course, that's all, it's a good degree, everything.
But maybe maybe coming, 'cause I don't wanna volunteer him without asking, maybe having Nate Green, like, maybe be able to kind of discuss some of this and kind of paint a picture to kind of give him a few questions.
Well, yeah, Nate and maybe get Mark Beckton, because Mark Mark Beckton has some good, uh, helpful thoughts about how the, you know, the field, uh, uses it.
Yeah. Yeah.
'Cause I, I'm gonna make it make sense and be practical, um, you know.
I I I I'm so sorry, I'm so dogged, I was wondering, because I was standing in front of the Board of Education ten, twelve years ago, with this exact topic, and I see this game, getting getting lit up.
It's all part of the.
It hurts. Yeah, so we haven't solved it, but then then it's.
Yeah.
A different board.
Different board. Um, okay, so let's let's get some feedback on this before we solidify anything.
Um, so, the next thing is, we talked about, um, a definition for develop- uh, developmentally appropriate, and, you know, there is some discussion of whether or not age it should be one of those factors that's included. This proposed definition, um, kind of rearranges the words a little bit, so that it puts the, um, stage of development as the first kind of item, um, and then the individual characteristics, where age would be kind of inherently in that, um, and it's not listed, so it's.
What's age?
Yeah, uh, this is, that's right.
Oh, this is the, this chapter.
This is the, this is Richie?
Oh, that's, sorry.
I'm sorry, I moved on, I don't know that I actually told any of you that I was on a different chapter.
No, you didn't.
I'm sorry.
I don't want to have my my page yet again.
So.
Mm-hmm.
Home seat. That part of, uh.
The green.
The definition, that's the first green definition before.
Yeah, the green. For developmentally appropriate.
In the middle of the page, in in the middle of the page, uh, developmentally appropriate.
Was this pulled from any data source? Was this pulled from any data source, like Webster's or?
Webster's.
We looked at several different definitions and kind of put in the pieces that, you know, yeah.
I think this still needs work, it's getting there.
Mm-hmm.
I would I would, I notice a red, I'm sorry.
So we're no, we're 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 being on wrong, we're astray, we're on the green, the first green definition, developmentally appropriate.
It's red.
Red. It's maybe carved up, the issue is instead of the size.
Not quite there yet, it's right above it.
It's kind of remarkable, is there even a is there a working industry definition of this term? It'd be kind of weird, sure. Yeah.
Just as as defined in Webster's.
I don't know.
Well, it's not gonna be in dictionary, but.
No, but I always think it would be, please.
Um in the side by side, the definition that was there previously is on page twenty-four, so you can see, kind of compare the two there.
How can you just, can you just say instead s- stage of development?
So. Yeah. So I you have two different issues here. Like you said, one, you have a collective problem.
And.
So you wanna say developmentally appropriate, age has always been the proxy, right? So a cohort that shares certain characteristics, uh developing characteristics, typically using age for that. But you also can have individuals developing at different rates, so somebody could, you know, something developmentally appropriate for one kid is not necessarily gonna be appropriate for
Stage of development.
the same kid at a different level, so you've got a group concept and an individual concept, and we're trying to combine them both in one definition, and I find it a little awkward um to put it in one sentence. That's part of my issue. So just.
Is it about an education or a social?
Uh so, you know, uh I'm just looking up some definitions online, and there's one that's apparently in U S law right now.
Developmentally appropriate?
Yeah.
I can tell you where we use it in um the proposal. Um so, for example, exploration of career pathways in a developmentally appropriate manner. Um developmentally appropriate daily physical activity. Um provides a developmentally appropriate collection of resources.
And um. And that's it right now. So the 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 development is a adjective of mental or physical?
Yeah, that's what I was getting at, is it is if you can group kids according to their learning skills and aptitudes, you have a twelve year old, national fourteen year old, for example,
It's it's not.
or are you talking physical or social or visiting? Where are we?
Uh so so I'm just gonna read, this is one quote from a, it seems to be a public health statute, and it's federal statute. And it's gets to some of these, but I think it's a better word. Not that we have to, just throw it out. Developing the appropriate means, activities or items that are generally accepted as suitable for children of the same chronological age or level of maturity whether they're determined to be developmentally appropriate for a child based on the development of cognitive, emotional, physical and behavioral capacities that are typical for an age, what age. That's just the first part. It's it's very wonderful, it's it's fairly good.
Confering competency.
Um and then they have a separate one for an individual child, which is similar, but it's different to an individual. Um.
So you.
I mean, that's pretty tight.
I mean, sometimes it's that because it's federal definition, you can write.
I can, yeah, I mean, we can.
It says it's a role on one one or two.
It's a it's a U S statute, got got the it's seems to be a public health statute, but it's in a different. Anyway, I think that gets close to what we're talking about. Um.
Conceptual, when I think about, you wouldn't ask an infant to walk or try to get an infant to walk, right?
Right.
They have tasks to be developmentally appropriate.
You wouldn't ask a second grader to be Elkhart or Western Front, sorry, you know, but those are obvious examples, but it gets a little trickier when we're in these awkward, especially in middle school, I think is where you start to see kids
Yeah.
advance, you know, take big leaps of maturity, you know, the kids don't want to say inappropriate, it's sixth grade, eighth grade, in fact, it becomes a little uh a little less clear. So I think having a good definition of work.
A disciplinary if you go to to your fourth or fifth grade, that's show well, that's what I mean. And they move up to the next level, and they're with older, mature kids.
And. Right, and then, right, so they could be uh.
And that meant that that's no gender reference, right?
I'm not sure. No, no, but. But I think um so in that particular case, uh kids advancing, right, it's developmentally appropriate for that kid to be doing algebra, for example, whereas it might not be for another kid. But I think part of where you get into, you know, school districts get into trouble with parents is um cultural issues, you know. Uh when is it developmentally appropriate to be talking about certain really emotionally fraught topics or, you know, you don't.
Sex ed?
Sex ed, but also, you know, but like we we just did Holocaust education a lot back, you know, at what point do we introduce them into these horrifying concepts, you know, that kind of stuff? Developmental, having a good working definition of this, I think would be really useful. I'm not quite sure we're there on this one, so I think we will work on it. 'Cause I think it's an important concept.
If you wanna send me the citation for that somewhere to that federalistic council.
I will. I'll look, I'll try to look for some other ones, but this one is a nice concise definition.
Yeah.
How do you get around the subject topic?
Well, I don't know that you can call this.
Do we wanna move on to the next topic, given that we're?
Yeah, let's let's pull that one.
Um so student educator ratios, um the you know, we talked about putting an app on there, we talked about um this proposed language here keeps some of the um criteria that were in the original language, you know, creating the opportunities based on safety policies, content, instructional, et cetera, but it puts the caps back in that are already there. So that is how the board wants to move forward, if they want some caps if they want to.
Is this about the?
The ratios, the ratios.
Proportions versus max.
I I'm fine keeping it, I just don't think we're ready to have that conversation about
Yeah.
what is an appropriate ratio without having a cap on it, so I'm fine.
But what can we work?
Well, and that's kind of what this does. Um shall establish student educator ratios that promote student learning for each learning opportunity and then maybe grade level based upon school safety policies, content, and block block. Um based on the following, and then it creates, it just adopts the maxes that are in there. Two, grade two, twenty-five students are for per educator. Um and again, the per educator is is in the current rule, so we're not changing that, but I think that's an um important to have it per educator and not per classroom.
Yeah.
Uh and the previous category heading was class size, I think, and we're taking the class size out, and that helps us get around the concept of a class size.
Yes, and class size.
I mean, that's gonna be the default for most of everything, but it doesn't necessarily have to be the concept that we're pursuing as class, you know, so.
Yeah. So uh whi- which kind of protects the other end, other in fact, I could have a Zoom class with a hundred people, even though my room size is small.
As long as you have four educators.
It's it's in for, yeah, exactly, as long as you have the ratio right, that's fine.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, if it is uh the fire marshal thing, within the room, you can't have more than twenty-five people, then that's one thing.
True. Yeah.
But I think that the ratio makes a lot of sense, it covers both medium, you know, physical as well as psychological.
Yeah. Right. You can have a lecture hall, as long as you have four teachers in there, you've got a hundred students, so. Keeps the ratio there, sort of.
So so currently it is a ratio, and I'm fine with the ratio, okay, as long as you have a that captures both.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, I think it works.
Yeah.
That's excellent, thank you. Alright, I'm gonna flip it over. Um so this was, again, these were comments um that all us made regarding family consumer science. Um they they did make a comment on business education, which is also not listed in the adequate education list, but those two items have been in the rules for a very long time. They are not listed in one ninety-three E two A as subject matters that are required to be taught for an adequate education. In the rules, it's not stating that these have to be taught, but they have to be offered. They don't, they're not graduation requirements, they're not.
Hmm.
So, you know, do we do we leave these classes in the rules or do we take them out to match the statute? Is the question.
Are they saying they shouldn't be in there?
You know, it's the comments are.
Can I put just say a recommend?
Is uh you know, is this, so one of them is, is is this is personal finance literacy the same as family consumer science or um you know, is this the statute, you know.
I don't know, I just thought it was.
I mean.
What is this? There's no such category in our, say, one ninety-three E two A, so it it doesn't necess- so they aren't listed in one ninety-three E two A, but are really.
Where. Where where are they in the?
Um so they are, if we're looking at three oh six, well, if we're looking at the side by side, it's gonna be in three oh six two one and three oh six two two, so.
Do you know what page that is?
Um. Well, it seems like I could.
Oh, I turned right to the.
Oh, okay, which one?
Fifty-seven it looks like. Oh, no, I don't see that.
Okay, for minus.
We're almost there.
Minus fifty-seven.
Yep.
But if we, um so it's actually, if you go to page sixty, it lists out kind of the um
Yeah.
the areas that are um required to be offered. So students are not required to take classes in family consumer science or CTE or business education, but schools have to make it available.
What exactly does this cover? Can you touch this one?
It's the old combat, so it's.
Okay.
Co- yeah, it's just your, um hey, how to do a household budget, a lot of it's covered in personal finance, but all of it, so some of it would be, um you know,
Yeah.
how to, some of it is included, like for elementary schools, like
I don't know.
uh how to iron your clothes and.
Like fire.
Dude, yeah, like really basic lives, home life skills stuff.
Right.
It's kind of a blend of uh economics, like how to have this checkbook and how to do your basic around the house life skills, so.
Oh, okay.
So that's uh it's kind of a hybrid. Um I'm kind of okay if we take family consumer science out if we have um personal finance in there, right? Um.
Doesn't that make us all do, do you?
Yes, it's required.
Uh but this education, I would love to keep. They're not gonna make us take it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, they don't, kids don't have to take it, we're not putting it in the in the graduation requirements, but you gotta offer it.
So but family and consumer science would um include um, I think, I'll make a particular one of this.
Really, that's that's basically what I guess.
Yeah, no, no, but it was it was um it was a business, I don't know, a shop, um.
Are you taking us back to the old times?
I don't, yeah, I don't, taking back on the mid-seventies was um, oh, DE.
Really?
DECA. Demonstr- it was, I don't know, it was, yeah, you learn how to run a store, could be a storefront, how to essentially was, I guess that's.
Hmm.
I guess that's business.
Business education, it's business.
Simple shape, yeah.
It's a little bit, sure. Sure. I mean, what do you guys think about family consumer science? Um we've got health, physical, that's what we're having, so.
There's just so much to come, they just so much to do, information about it, I don't know where in that.
Hey, hey. Do you get it? Sixty right time, Joe, we're on sixty.
Space sixty in the in the side by side.
Come on, sixty. Yeah, it's not there.
I mean.
Yeah.
I don't know. I'm gonna have to sixty-five.
Yeah, I don't, I I feel, I wasn't, I went back to it to see if there was something else I.
I age sixty.
Just search family consumer sex.
I think, I don't know how the judgment change.
So do we have cheese, nutrition, is nutrition wellness, is nutrition in there?
I think that's under health and wellness, which is all.
Yeah, health is required.
If you put a purpose in side by side, is that, I just. I'm just a little bit wrong.
Well, I mean. I don't wanna get too carried away with foreign additional requirements out there, but those are valuable courses, they're valuable life skills, that's why.
What's my, you, we.
And yet this is something else we can post all this too, so like, yeah, it.
You might.
Yeah, will will you make us take it out if it's not required by statute? If we're just saying you have to offer the course, you don't have to, like, I don't, I think that's a good, 'cause we, you know, for example,
Okay.
if they make us take this out, but it's not required by statute, then how are they gonna allow us to require four degree courses? That's not in the statute either.
I think, I think.
So where does this fall within the rulemaking authority of deciding what standards?
I mean, I think it's pretty clear, we have the authority to say you have to offer this whole course, okay, but I'm fine keeping it that. So they already offered them, and so it's not like we're adding anything that ain't already there.
Right, it's about re- it's about offering kids access to education they might not get at home, like, like.
Part part of the reason for having both of these in there is exactly that, you have kids who, parents don't have these life skills, aren't necessarily able to teach the kid how to edit a checkbook or how to organize their house, you know, that kind of thing.
Or a balanced diet.
It's it's frustrating for kids who do have parents like that to have to take this, but you don't have to take it, they only have to offer it, and that's where I think the balance is still. I had to take it. I hated that class.
Will you try taking DECA, okay?
I would much rather have taken that, I think we're kind of tight though, so that's good.
I wanna see where we're gonna add um Latin, I don't know, Latin in cursive back in here.
Cursive is, cursive is a, cursive is state law, it's back in.
Cursive is back in, yeah. Yes, um.
We don't have to do that, it's already.
Cursive multiplication tables.
Yep, cursive state law.
So where's Latin?
I don't, I'm I'm I will fight you on that.
Although Latin, I suppose, is within that English credit.
Maybe. Yeah, I don't, I don't, I mean, Latin is fairly valuable, but I know plenty of kids who would struggle with that.
We.
For limited, for limited value.
All the work, all the work is to take it, with the struggle we're all.
The the last.
The pilots, the pilots that make it through.
That's right.
The last item we have that was kind of an outstanding is that forty-three required course offerings, do they need to be in person, um or do they get?
No.
Um and you can see here that on this, we um there's a proposed definition of um including course within the definition, so that they're interchangeable. Are they the same thing? Um but right in the in the rule currently and in the proposed rule, there's language that that says that, you know, of those forty-three minimum course requirements, it lays out how they determine that, and so it says, if if they're going to have this amount of courses, they have to meet such criteria, et cetera. And and so yeah, if we leave it as is, it's going to be the one that will, you know.
So, and just to be clear, right, so um then maybe some people would take this to mean, oh my gosh, a school could offer all online courses, but they can't, 'cause we have a separate rule on online courses. That's if the parents have to actively opt request an online course and opt into it, you cannot forcibly do an online course, except for a student aid and uh or whoever in the circle. Um so that rule prevents a school from saying, well, we're gonna have a fun online school. They have to offer them, uh basically they have to offer in person unless a parent opts in. We can't do online, we can't do remote unless a parent opts in, and so you can offer remote courses for kids who opt into them, and that could satisfy from this.
Yeah, even if it's.
But you can't simply say, well, kids, you're all gonna feel well.
Yeah, and so I I don't think changing the the language there is going to change that meaning in terms of how it was supposed to offer.
Yeah. Is that it? We're at the end?
Um, yeah, and then, you know, there's just a few items here, um, the commissioner and I went to the Legislative Oversight Committee on Tuesday, um, and he presented to them, um, and he answered some questions about your rules, and so there were a couple of items that were brought up, um, and changes that we're making, again, based on the Legislative Oversight Committee and statute, so just wanted to keep aware of those, so for instance, turns out that there is a definition of work-study practices in statutes, um, and so that is what we'll be using for that definition, um. The the word, the term grade level is used throughout the statute, not learning level, um, and so most places, we've already said grade level or learning level, grade level and learning level, so I think those are both covered there, but that was, um, something that was brought up, that the commissioner agreed that, you know, grade level is what was in statute. And then again, they talked about the content areas, those have, um, actually become more, um, narrow in the statute, and so it was just that we mirrored that in the rules. So, again, arts education, including music and visual arts, social studies, listing out those requirements, um, health education has been turned into well, health and wellness education. So those, again, are just mirroring one ninety three E two A, so that they reflect in the rules, so that it's clear those are the topics that are. And that's, that's it.
Okay.
So I hope, I have some, yeah, some outstanding items, can do some follow up in terms of, um, you know, getting people, um,
Well, that'd be a few, uh, senior.
to weigh in or, um, you know, come in and speak to the board, but, and, yeah.
And we're gonna update the side by side.
Yes, so that's, I promise, I'm working on it, so, thank you all.
Yeah.
Yes.
And you know, they're separated.
Thanks, you're welcome.
Those are all being put in the minimum standards canvas, and it's not leaving, leaving me, because they're totally separated, so I'm just making sure, so.
Thank you. Yeah, okay.
'Cause it gets too too confusing, kind of thing.
Yeah.
So to get there, you have to go out of the module and go.
Just go to your dashboard, and you'll see it.
The J's. Special three oh six icon.
Yeah, if you just click on the dashboard, you'll see it right there, there should be two, state board and then, I've never been in yet.
And side by side.
And all the documents there.
With eight sixty.
Um, give me something. If you go to your dashboard, you'll see three oh six minimum standards. Let me make sure you got it.
Should be in there. It just doesn't have to say.
I can look down before we.
What I saw there.
Let me make sure it can add to to.
Have you thought you found it, or?
Yeah.
On your dashboard, yeah. It's doing. I'm trying to make.
Well, I keep it, that's better, like, okay.
I thought I saw it, but it's there, but if you go to page sixty, you don't get the same.
I could. No, it's 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 because the document, I don't have the same.
I I don't have the.
Insurance laws, I have no idea what it is.
Yeah, don't give.
It's, let me duck about man.
Um, I still do not have the, uh, meeting minutes in my, uh, packet, so I can't, uh.
I don't have. Yeah, they're not on.
So we should table, we should just hold them until next month.
Our session, you have something?
We do, okay, I already.
I don't.
No, I was just trying to see, w- with what document are you looking at, um, should I leave my email or admin, you know?
Canvas.
So go to Canvas, and then go to, on the left hand side, go to dashboard, if you click on dashboard.
If you go to Canvas, then.
Let me just check that, um, I forgot, this brush.
Okay, oh, okay, oh, oh my God, I haven't even set up, I need to find my email address.
Oh. Oh, good shit. Yep, and so then then click on the left hand margin, click on dashboard. Alright, they're not there, I don't know.
Dashboard, okay, now what do, what I was supposed to do?
So I can't go down, I can't see. The six, um.
Oh, okay.
So the three oh six is some, I don't have it, but you do.
Alright, so consent agenda, I think we've, uh, table a meeting minutes, sounds familiar, so, so, and some of us.
And I, I'm sorry about that, I didn't, I, I thought I saw it in there, but.
Uh, and then. Deerfield, E five B for all of these, did, wanna help with some of those?
Can we get a motion to table it on it?
Yeah, we will, if we wanna table it, we can just kinda, we can just, right, but we can table something.
Some. Some more.
Okay, do we need a second on tabling the minutes?
Second.
Second, raw call paper, uh, night, okay.
Right.
Thanks.
Sorry, sorry.
Do we need, uh, did they give us a motion on Deerfield?
No, it's all on the consent agenda, I don't know.
Yeah, but we. It's a second, or, I mean, just we need something to accept it, right?
I'll make a motion to accept the Deerfield School District memorandum of understanding to do the following, as high schools maintained by the district, Pembroke School District, Concord High School, Concorda Northwood Academy.
I'm not sure, I think we should be accepted, I believe.
Accept or approve.
As appropriate, okay, uh, second.
Second.
Um, second for Jim, all clear?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, we don't need to load any of the wrong cases, that's just information, so we are done, unless anybody has anything.
No, we, July, I wonder if we talked about it in the January.
I mean, I don't know. Uh, I think we probably need to work on the three oh six.
That's what I'm thinking with you, so, I think that will be, yeah.
Right, right. Yeah, I think we need one.
No, I need to, we we need to get this out, isn't it, that whole, this three plus?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we're almost there, I think we're, are the three oh sixes, we're, yeah, we're almost there.
Yeah.
We can wrap it up next month, I think. So that'd be the eleven. Come, come July, happy.
So it's on?
Yeah, I think so, I think we need it.
Okay, I will be, I will be, I have to be virtual.
Okay, I need to. No, well, can't have it, we don't have a forum.
I'll, um, I'll, I'll kind of pull the everyone, just seeing.
I mean, if we have to move it a few days, we can move it, yeah.
Around, okay, yep. I can move it.
Four, like backwards, backwards.
Back, four, four.
I can move it four, four, to the twelfth, or whatever.
Like a.
Okay. You mean backwards, higher numbers.
Higher.
I mean, higher higher numbers, yeah.
Higher numbers, okay, so that's backwards, okay.
The child of course should move.
I'm going to, I'm going to be doing rain child, so.
Alright, that's important, uh, okay, so maybe it can be the next week. Yeah, uh, how many rounds do you have, do you have?
I, so, I, I don't know, I'm in Asia, I've been in China, so, I'm out.
Oh, you're, when are you, when are you out?
This is.
Which week, I'm flying out for three months, I think. I can call in, but, you know, if we had two, morning, and I think this time would be.
Soon, yeah, that would be pretty funny.
Yeah, one A M., one A M., you know, it's three A M.
Yeah, oh my gosh, well, hopefully, um, so we we may have any more number by then, if the, 'cause that kind of council, I said, doesn't take too long.
Yeah, or if it's, if there's anything that needs more, so, you know, you call me, and like, what you did.
Well, I mean, I really appreciate your input on Scott, whether you end up having to vote him or not, so as we move forward with these definitions, let's just make sure you're giving us our inputs, so we can incorporate it,
Okay. Okay.
'Cause I mean, we give out in the conversation, this stuff, um, yeah, so Phil, it feels good, originally, um, if we have any more number, we should be better.
Well, I think that maybe, I think, maybe, but, sort of, it's.
Yeah, I I think, 'cause, well, there's a, there's gotta be a two week lag, so, um, if, maybe we can get it, if he was nominated, yes, just better. If he could get approved on the twenty six, that'd be good for two weeks after that, so. So that would, that should, we should be able to make that work. Uh, I mean, if we draft though, which I was, uh, okay. Alright, well, motion to adjourn.
I think we made a motion to adjourn.
Well done.
Second for him, all in favor? Aye, alright, thanks everybody. I guess you guys can stay around and talk about master.
Oh, we.
That's what we're saying. Okay, yeah, I got those.
Alright.
Do you need to take the long down, if I'm waiting?
Yes, we're on the same page.
Yeah, proficiency mastery, we are on the same page. Very, yeah.
So, enter master.
Oh, yeah. I mean, get it.
If you can't just go to your thing. By choice. But you can't, it should be. This was my, yeah, you might have read this to your email. This is the, this is the temporary password you said.
And the dog, because you're already be set up as a male branch.
Huh. And it's happened to me ever since I've brought it. Huh. That's me. Wonder if it's because you have. Yeah, we need to pull it. Yeah, let me, I, let me just, let me just, let me see, um. Yeah.